Public participation, sorry. Public participants will be muted except during the public comment portion of the meeting, where individuals wishing to comment will be unmuted individually. During the public comment portion of the meeting, participants who indicated a desire to comment during registration will be unmuted and called on, as will webinar participants using the raise hand feature. Members of the public are asked to state their full name and address and to limit their comments to three minutes. As with our in-person meetings, this board meeting is being recorded and will be made available on the district website. With that, I will now call to order the March 8th meeting of the East Penn Board of School Directors. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First order of business is a roll call for attendance. Mrs. Allen, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bowman?
Present.
Mr. Byrd? Mr. Byrd?
Here.
Mr. Champagne?
Present.
Mr. Jenkowski?
Present.
Dr. Levinson?
Here.
Dr. Munson?
Present.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Lynch?
Here.
Dr. Bacher?
Here.
All present.
Moving on to request, to address the board, I have, I see two requests. The first is Dr. Semenajad on opening elementary schools five, five days in person.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Bereng Semenajad, and I'm a local neurologist. I live in 6852 Sunflower Lane here in Lower McCongee. I think the school board must consider positives and negatives of virtual learning. By keeping our children at home, one tries to eliminate risk of getting COVID. However, one forgets about current and future consequence of such decisions, especially for elementary school children's and children's ages six to 12, as we have enough data to have those children, especially ages six to 12, safe for in-person learning. It seems that the board considers a school as a vacuum. Children are only at risk of getting COVID in a school. Teachers are only at risk of getting COVID in schools. Do all teachers, students, and their parents stay at home 24/7 during a pandemic to minimize their risk or no? They do go out in the public, go shopping, do interact with their friends, but keeping them out of school, the children, were only eliminating a small negligible risk. Research is there specifically for children younger than 12. It's all on covidactnow.org, which is a consortium of Georgetown, Stanford, and Harvard that one can have in-person learning, especially for children ages six to 12. I, like many other people, was afraid of COVID when it started, and I'm still concerned about COVID, but we must learn and adapt to live with the virus and not completely block our children from learning and cause irreversible damages to their education and psychological health. We know that isolation can cause long-term psychological damage to their, to our children and their future. Of course, the data was not there for the first six to nine months, but now, looking back, we have more than enough data that shows that when the community transmission is high, school can stay open. Children-to-children transmission, especially ages six to 12, has been rare. Children-to-teacher transmission has been rare. Epidemics in the schools have been rare, and majority of outbreaks happen outside school, not in the school. I am an essential worker. Grocery store workers are an essential worker. Many other people are essential workers. So are teachers. One does not really have a say to not show up to work because there is a pandemic, and that's part of our jobs. Many people are essential workers. We can't gain time loss for education. If other school districts in Pennsylvania can have children in a school five days a week by following the distance of four to six weeks, so can we, and we should change our health plan, as it was submitted initially six feet to four or six feet, because we do not have the space for six feet. If we do, great, have the children six, six feet apart. If we don't, then we should change it to four to six feet, because the data is really there from the WHO for one meter, which is a little over three feet. I'm a big proponent of public education. If it was not for the in-person learning, I would have never transferred my children to Catholic school, because I pay high taxes here in Lower McCongee, and I would like my children to go to public school. And I look forward to enrolling my, both of my daughters next year in elementary school first grade, in-person, five days a week. Thank you.
Thank you. The next up is Megan First on five-day instruction.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Megan First. I live on Broad Street in Inmaeus, and two of my four children currently attend East Penn schools. I wanted to take a few minutes and talk about opening the schools back up 100%. In my opinion, buildings should be open. Here we are just days shy of the one-year mark of the pandemic shutdown, and just for an example, the high school currently has 70% of the students remote. Charter schools in the area now have wait lists for students to get in, yet the school board is trying to figure out why students are leaving and how to retain them again for next school year. Simple solution is opening the school backs up full capacity. Now, I understand this solution is not right fit, is the right fit for all families. Respectfully, as many families want a five-day instruction, there are those that still want remote. That should be their choice, but at least give us that choice. And we should be able, made aware now of the opening plan for the 2122 school year so parents can plan accordingly. This is a virus. It will never go away. Just like we currently have the flu, the measles, the chickenpox, et cetera, we have COVID. All those that I just mentioned, we have vaccines for, but it's still around. The viruses do not disappear. I was taught at a very young age to wash my hands, do not share food and drinks, cover my cough, sneeze, et cetera. Now, as a parent, I pass that on to my kids. Now, before anyone flips on me, no, I'm not a doctor or a nurse. I have never said that COVID is not real. I have personally known people who have passed from this virus. That being said, I'm a mom of four. My youngest turns three this month, and my oldest turned 16 in two months. They have combined a total of had, have had 15 surgeries in their life so far. One of them was open-heart surgery, and a few of them were actually lung and trachea surgeries. Now, I did isolate my kids for the three, four weeks last year when the closures began in March. Since then, we have lived our lives as normal as possible. Yes, even with heart and lung issues, we have returned our lives to make it as normal as possible for our children. When I was in the hospital, one thing I learned was that kids need germs. They need germs to fight off germs. Kids were not made to be isolated. Kids should be outside having fun. They should be hanging out with friends and learning properly in school. It is truly sad how isolated our kids are even while at school. That is probably why so many have chosen remote, but kids need to be kids. We are all at risk the moment we wake up each day, where it could be potentially our last day on earth. We could unfortunately suffer a heart attack, get into a car accident, have a work accident, et cetera, but we still get up each day and live our life to the fullest. It is not healthy to isolate yourself for a moment of time, let alone for a year. So what is the end game, if you will, for these closures? When will it be okay to get the kids back? Will it be zero cases of COVID? Because respectfully, that will never happen. Vaccines are currently out, but are not intended for those under 16 at this time. Do we keep our children home to do remote learning from kindergarten until 16 to keep them safe? Because that sounds absurd when you say it out loud. Do closure, do the schools close down every year during high-virus times? No, that is not the answer. What you personally do each year is you wash your hands, you don't share food, you cover your cough, but you live your life. And many of you listening right now on the board and listening on the phone or Zooms know that my, my son at the high school, I know my daughter at LMMS. Both of them are actually five days right now, instruction. You may be wondering why I'm even speaking on the matter as opening five days, since mine both go. But just because my kids go five days does not mean that they are happy. You try going somewhere and not being able to interact with friends for five to seven hours of the day, or even seeing your friends because they're on a different schedule. It's not fun, and you can't do it, so please don't expect these children to do it. But for my personal kids, it is the best option for their mental health. Plus, I'm also speaking tonight for those that might not have wanted to call in, as it can be very overwhelming. Us parents need to stick together for the sake of these kids and make them top priority. The topic of budget is brought up each meeting. The budget should also include reimbursing parents for doctors and therapy appointments, as well as medication for these East Penn students, since depression, anxiety, mental health has risen significantly over the year. And I will end with this little bit. Can you tell me in the past year that you have personally stayed isolated in your house? Have you left your house to go grocery shopping? Have you seen anyone besides those that are physically that live at your address? Have you gone on vacations to the beach, to a weekend trip, or even a day trip? Have you had any friends or family gatherings, say for Halloween, Thanksgiving, or Christmas, and even New Year's? Have you gone bowling, mini-golfing, or played a game on the back nine? Have you gone wine tasting, et cetera? Have you been within less than six feet of anyone besides those that live at your house? I can respectfully, right now, 100% tell you that if any of the 1,079 East Penn School District staff members say no to those questions, that they are lying. Remember, we live in a world of social media. But I can also say that when you saw those friends or family members, or you went on your vacation or out and about till you properly, you took proper precautions that, like you have done every single year of your life. Teachers and staff need to get back to work. They see the same 25 to maybe 100-ish students, depending on what grade they teach, each week, and those students are counting on those teachers. If they do not want to do their job, they should resign and find a different profession, because I'm sure doctors and nurses are burnt out from seeing thousands of different patients over the last year, but they still show up to work every day to do their job. These children deserve a proper education. No more hybrid, no more flapping back and forth, no more closures every other week saying that the building needs to be cleaned, when that should be done in general, virus or not. If sports arenas have opened again, indoor sports activity places in our immediate area have even opened again and are packed daily, and even places like Kalahari are open, schools can fully be open. There should only be two options for parents to choose, five days or remote. Enough is enough. Get these kids back to the building full-time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, I do not see any other attendees up. Jason Jenkins has his hand up. You're on mute.
Yes, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to comment on the state of the IR cafeteria. I don't know if most parents are aware of this, but the way the students are grouped basically to sit by themselves, and then they have partitions that almost look like a science fair project with three-fold partitions that are probably two to three feet high in length, with the middle one being somewhat clear. But I actually think it's one of the most humiliating and demoralizing things I've ever seen for a virus that kept, that what, 1 in 300,000 are getting at this point. If there's an outbreak, I don't know about it, but I've actually pulled my daughter out of hybrid learning, because I thought it was just crushing her will to even be involved in the school district. I mean, there's gotta be a better solution. I don't know who proposed it, but it's ridiculous, and there's really no reason why they can't have any joy in their lives, at least in the cafeteria. I know you want to err on the side of caution here, but I think we're getting to a place where it's overkill, and, and like I said, I just can't do it anymore. I'm really, really thinking about private school and other, other means, because there's lots of people that are back that don't have these silly recommendations that just don't make sense on any level. And I have noticed a huge change in my daughter. She's missed the eighth-grade dance, she's missed the seventh-grade stuff. It's not fair. And at some point, you guys got to do the thing. It's not an easy decision, but you need to do it, and you need to say, until there's a problem, we're going back, and we're going to go back with as much normal as we can. And that's just how I feel about it, and I appreciate you guys listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Moving on to approval of board minutes, may I have a motion, please?
Summer Bowman?
Lynch, second.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Allen, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Byrd?
Aye.
Mr. Champagne?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkowski?
Aye.
Dr. Levinson?
Aye.
Dr. Munson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Lynch?
Aye.
Ms. Bowman?
Aye.
Dr. Bacher?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Motion passes. Next up is the preliminary budget review on revenue. Mrs. Campbell? Saul?
I think I'll, I'll actually take this one this evening. I think Mrs. Campbell will have plenty to talk about later on another topic, so. This evening, we would like to talk to the board just a little bit about the revenue projections for 2122. Just a comment about the presentation. The board did receive the presentation in advance. I'll comment that the page numbers aren't going to align, because I repeated some of the slides in here, so I don't have to jump back and forth. So if we're going along and you notice the page numbers aren't matching up, that's why, but it should help the presentation flow a little better as we proceed through. I just need to, there we go. Early in the budget process, the administration established restoration as the budget priority for 2122. However, there continue to be priority items that were identified pre-pandemic that have not been addressed. The administration will provide the board with an update regarding those priority items that extend beyond 2122. That update was originally slated for March 22nd, but we've pushed that back to April 12th, and that has been noted in the budget timeline. That'll allow us a little extra time to prepare for that presentation, and as you know, there have been a few other pressing matters that have taken our time more immediately. So we fully intend to present that information, but, and it will fit better with the expenditure items on April 12th. As previously noted, the philosophical approach for the 2122 budget can very simply be summarized as a budget of restoration. I've included in this presentation the budget expenses that we saw in the previous, at the previous board meeting. I actually don't intend to review these this evening. I put them in this presentation for two reasons. First, the budget, our budget presentations tend to build upon each other, and I wanted to have these in this presentation, so if you care to refer back, you'll have the expenditure summaries, as well as the revenue summaries in the same place. The second reason I wanted to include them is on this other services slide, in the miscellaneous services line item, there were some expenses inadvertently excluded from both the 2021 budget and the 2122 budget. They were budgets that are expenses that didn't increase, so they're actually the same amount in both years. The increase, actually, the decrease amount remains the same, but by plugging those numbers, and it makes both the, the total other services line, the total services and the grand totals align to what you will see in the long-range fiscal plan when we receive it. So again, trying to make it consistent so that you can compare back and forth, and we'll be seeing the same numbers. So with that, we'll move on to the revenue discussions for this evening. I'd like to provide the board with an overview of the projected revenues for 2122, as well as some supplemental information that's intended to clarify and support our budget development process for revenues. The first and probably most significant line item we'll talk about is current real estate taxes. Current real estate taxes are showing a total year-over-year increase of 6.6%. I'd like to take a few minutes to break down that increase into its component parts, and the graph on the next slide will help us see that visually. Real estate tax collections for the current year have remained strong and are not showing signs of increased delinquency, as we had anticipated when we're building the budget for the current year. Collections through the end of the fiscal period are anticipated to be at 96.2% of the tax levy. An in-depth analysis of recent years revealed that this percentage is actually in alignment with our pre-pandemic collections. Based on the higher-than-anticipated current-year collections, real estate tax collections for 2122 are presently budgeted at 95.8% of the tax levy. This is 4 tenths of a percent lower than the anticipated current-year collection rate to allow for the possibility of decreased collections, as was experienced during the Great Recession of 2007 to 2009. The 4 tenths of a percent differential in collection rate will also allow for full implementation of the property tax rebate program, the modifications which we discussed last spring. The revised collection rate, so the revision of the collection rate accounts for 1.1% of the year-over-year current tax collection budgeted increase. Budgeted real estate tax collections are also bolstered by growth in assessment. There has been growth in both residential and commercial industrial assessment. It's important to note that one warehouse alone has generated nearly half of the total assessment growth. Assessment growth accounts for 1.9% of the year-over-year current tax collection budget increase. And then finally, the final component is, this budget includes a current real estate tax millage rate increase of 3.6%, which is the adjusted Act One index for 2122. This accounts for the remaining 3.6% of the year-over-year tax collection, current tax collection budget increase. On the next slide, we can see the Act One increase percentage for each year over the past several years, as well as the district's adopted real estate tax increase percentage for the past several years. We've also included the five-year and 10-year average real estate tax, average tax increase. These averages are inclusive of the 3.6% tax increase currently reflected in the budget. And you can see those at the bottom. The next, the next line item is our interim real estate taxes. Interim real estate taxes actually have exceeded our expectations during the current fiscal period due to residential and commercial industrial development that began pre-pandemic. The addition of the one warehouse that I mentioned earlier has actually more than doubled our real estate tax revenue, interim real estate tax revenue over our budget expectations. Now, despite these strong collections for the current year, interim real estate tax collections have been reduced by an additional 10% for 2122. This amount reflects the anticipated revenue in the current year when we remove the large one-off real estate development that are, were included this year. So, so that really gives us a comparison of year-over-year when we remove those things that, that have a one-time effect on that line item. The next line item I'd like to talk about is earned income taxes. While the growth, while the growth of earned income taxes deviated from pre-pandemic trends, so our trend was obviously upward, I mean, it has deviated from that trend, earned income tax collections for the current year have remained strong and are exceeding our budget expectations. Other school districts have reported experiencing similar results. In a recent presentation by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Independent Fiscal Office, there was reported that despite significant job losses, the average, average statewide wages still increased 6.7% in calendar year 2020. This statistic actually supports the strong earned income tax collections we've experienced during the current fiscal period. For 2122, earned income tax collections are budgeted, budgeted similar to our anticipated collections for the current year. This outlook, which is definitely more optimistic than our projections one year ago, is based on two things. First, the IFO data that suggests that there are, that we will have continued wage growth as well as a slow return to employment, so additional employment for those unemployed workers, as well as the strong earned income tax receipts that we have experienced during the current fiscal year. I'd like to share with you some of the slides from the IFO presentation. On the first slide, the IFO pointed out that low-wage, part-time jobs were the hardest hit among payroll jobs in 2020. I say payroll jobs because this does not include self-employment. This includes the retail and wholesale sector, arts and entertainment sector, and accommodations and food service. On the next slide, the IFO drilled down into the subsector level to show the areas with the most significant contraction during 2020. Those included full and limited-service restaurants, accommodations such as hotels, clothing and accessory retail, personal care such as salons, gaming, and air transportation. On the next slide, the IFO shared a comparison of statewide wages and payroll job percentages, along with the corresponding wage growth. As noted previously, this slide was helpful for explaining the earned income tax revenue receipts that we are experiencing this year. For 2020, wages contracted 1.2%. Meanwhile, payroll jobs decreased 7.4%. According to the IFO, we would have expected wages to contract at a similar rate to the reduction in jobs. So payroll wage, sorry, payroll jobs decreased 7.4%. What the IFO was saying is, at a minimum, we would expect wages to decrease similarly at 7.4%, but they didn't. They only decreased wages, statewide wages only decreased 1.2%. So they're suggesting that there was actually wage growth of 6.7% in those people who were not unemployed. Said differently, since the job loss rate was higher than the reduction of wages, the IFO concluded, those who contributed, continue to be employed, had wage increases. Again, this helped us understand our strong results relative to earned income taxes. The next slide displays the percentage change in the PA payroll employment from the pre-pandemic peak. I would suggest there are two takeaways from this graph. First, our budget development last year occurred during the worst possible time to evaluate economic data. You can see the low point was April, and it continued, you know, there was some improvement in May and June, but still, those were clearly the worst, the worst times to try to be evaluating data. Also, there will be a long tail of jobs recovery, very similar to, to the period, the 2008 recession. The next slide contains similar information, but this is employment and unemployment graphs from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, specifically for the Lehigh Valley. As we would expect, there's an inverse relationship between the employment and unemployment. However, if you look at these, they do bear a similar appearance to the previous graph we looked at. This local data appears to correspond to, to the peak times that we saw in the previous graph of April to June, with a gradual decline in unemployment after that. The next item I'd like to talk about is the real estate transfer tax. For the current year, real estate transfer taxes appear to be in line with our budget expectations. For 2122, real estate transfer taxes are budgeted at the same levels the current year. This decision is based upon the current-year collections, as well as the fact that during the Great Recession of 2007 to 2009, real estate transfer taxes didn't really display a pattern of increase or decrease. They remained relatively constant. As far as delinquent taxes are concerned, delinquent tax receipts for the current year are actually a bit difficult to evaluate currently due to the timing of the collection process. Uncollected real estate taxes are turned over for delinquent collection in January, and the majority of those revenues begin to be received in March and come in in the March-through-June timeframe. So obviously, a volume, a great volume of those have not been, have not started to be collected or turned over yet. For 2122, the delinquent real estate tax budget has been reduced by 10% in recognition that the current real estate tax collections have been stronger than we anticipated, and fewer taxes will actually be turned over for delinquent collection. With regard to earnings on investments, we're on track for the, for the current year with regard to our budget. Our interest rates have ranged from 2 tenths of a percent to as low as one basis point or 1 one-hundredth. Our interest rates have ranged from two tenths of a percent to as low as one basis point or one one hundredth of a percent. For twenty one twenty two, we've actually reduced the budget due to the anticipated and the projected low rates. In the marketplace. I D E A revenue is federal revenue that is passed through our local I U. And this, the revision to this is based on projections that are provided to us by the I U. Tuition from patrons was reduced. This includes things such as adult education, driver training, hosting I U classrooms. Again, you can see it was reduced some based on those various line items and evaluating those. And then similarly miscellaneous income includes things like eight receipts, athletic fees, rentals, and other types of miscellaneous income. And again, we're, we're somewhat anticipating. For instance, with eight receipts, if we continue to have social distancing and we limit the number of people who can attend, we certainly anticipate there could be reduced revenue. Same thing with rentals, we were, you know, at this point, we're not really certain. We would be renting out our buildings at the, at the same rate and capacity as we have done in the past, we made some adjustments for that. So that really gets us through our local revenues. With regard to state revenues. For twenty one twenty two, Governor Wolf proposed a plan that would increase East Penn School District's revenue significantly. However, based on, on the next slide, I actually have a, two articles based on the response from the General Assembly. At this point, we don't have confidence that that plan will be enacted as presented by the governor. And you can see here, you know, the government, Governor makes historic investment in public education. And then another article which talks about Republicans saying that the proposal is dead on arrival. So it makes, not to be a politically charged evaluation, but this is simply an evaluation of the environmental factors. We find it difficult at this point in terms of developing the budget to anticipate that the governor's proposal would be enacted. Along with that, it included significant increases that if included at this point. May cause significant work to go back and undo that if those dollars are included. So I'll quickly go over the various line items, the basic education funding line item. We have maintained at the, at the current year level. Basic education, the B E F's social security, that's a fifty percent reimbursement on our social security tax payments. And so this represents really an increase in our, in our payroll for twenty one twenty two. And then this would be the fifty percent reimbursement on, on the payroll portion. Tuition from courts is subsidy from the Commonwealth for wards of the state. Those would be children without parents who are, who are wards of the court, I'm sorry. And so we receive additional subsidy for that. Special education funding, very similar to basic education funding, we have assumed no increase at this point. Pupil transportation subsidy. For twenty one twenty two, the pupil transportation subsidy will be based on the actual transportation results for the current year. Due to the significant number of days pupils weren't transported in, in the current school year, the transportation subsidy will decrease for twenty one twenty two. Presently, we've budgeted that at sixty percent, so what we've tried to do is run, run through the formula that decreases that we have seen so far in the current year. And so we're anticipating a sixty percent reduction. Rental and sinking fund reimbursement, those are reimbursements that we receive on our debt service payments through the PlanCon program. Our debt service payments will go down for twenty one twenty two, so it follows that our reimbursements for those payments will be decreased. The school safety and security grants, these are representative of the COVID relief monies that we received in the current year. You'll recall last time when we had the expenditure presentation. That we removed the all grant related funds from the budget on the expenditure side. And here's where you're seeing that being removed on the revenue side. We'll also see a portion of it in the federal area. When we were adopting the budget, some of the funds were being provided, provided to us via the state. Other funds were being provided directly as federal, federal subsidies. And so that's why you see a portion of that at the time we budgeted in state, and then the other portion is in federal. The ready to learn block grant, again, very similar to basic education funding and pupil transportation, I'm sorry, special education funding. We have budgeted the ready to learn block grant the same levels the current year. And finally, the re, retirement reimbursement is very similar to the social security reimbursement. We receive fifty percent reimbursement on our payments to the public school employees retirement system. So the amount that's there, the increase is representative of fifty percent of the increase, our anticipated increase in retirement contributions. Finally, in the federal area. For most of our, our federal subsidies, we haven't received updated allocations for next year. Some of, some of our allocations were revised for the current year, and so we've made adjustments there. You can see for title one, we haven't received an updated revision. For the other miscellaneous federal programs, we've made some small tweaks based on updated information we have for the current year. Finally, in the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund, again, that was the COVID relief funds. You can see that we've removed that revenue from the budget that corresponded to the expenditures, which were the grants that we received only for this year. So that gets us to the end, you can see that our total, grand total revenue increase. Sorry, this is in my way. Is approximately three point eight percent over the current year budget. So with that, I will open it up, Mr. President, for any questions the board may have.
Okay, Ms. Bowman.
Yes, um, thank you, I always appreciate your presentations and how you walk us through it all. It's always very understandable. The three point eight percent increase is point two of that, the, from the various things that increased, I'm trying to figure out a way to, I'm sorry, having a hard time wording this question. Like the warehouse assessments and things that went up, is that, does that only account for point two of it, and then the rest of it is the tax increase?
Give me one moment, I'm going to pull this back up. We're at the end, pardon me, let me just go back to the I think you're, are you making reference to the the portion that the assessment is of the total increase?
Yeah, I, it sounded like that was all very good news, but it must not have been enough good news, I guess, if that makes sense. So the total increase of revenue is three point eight percent, it sounds like three point six percent of that is a tax increase. And so there's only like two point two percent that basically is everything else, is that correct?
I don't, I don't think the math is quite right, quite correct there because the, the six point six is the percentage increase of that line item. And the three, the three point eight is the total of all of the line items aggregated together.
Oh, I see, and so then there's some things taken out too, okay, I get it, thank you. So the, you basically, for the state budget, you just kept that flat because it's a question mark. And we may not know what's happening with that until after we pass our budget, which is unfortunate. Is that the same thing that you did with the federal, like there may be federal grant money coming? In the COVID relief package that's being debated right now, is, is any of that included? Or did you keep that flat as a question mark, unsure of what that would mean for us?
Those, those dollars have not been included at this point. Because we're, because we're focusing on a way to spend those that wouldn't supplant our current expenses, but would supplement our current program. The net effect, so, so as we add the grant revenues, we would be adding expenditures, if that makes sense. So the net effect would be zero. And certainly, we will, we will add those, I, I was just holding off to not complicate the whole process. I mean, they will need to be in there before we cross the finish line on the, with, with this budget development. But fundamentally, they should not change the bottom line unless we were starting to use those monies for expenditures that are currently in our budget.
Okay, okay, that makes sense, thanks. And then I'm having a, this next question is, I'm trying to put together what you told us in past presentations with this presentation. The reason that you're suggesting the three point eight percent increase is because we need to pay for what we're adding back in, which is the two. Replacing two of the six teaching, actually, it's more than six positions, but replacing at least two of the positions that we lost to attrition over the past year. Along with building budgets, summer maintenance staff and things like that, is that correct? That's where that, that accounts for that entire increase?
No, I think there are other things that, that are contributing factors to those increase, such as just wage increases themselves. The increase in the retirement rate, you know, increase the cost in terms of utilities. So all of those things that go up each year as a cost of doing business also contribute to those, to that overall increase.
Okay. I am also wondering what, I guess this might be a future presentation, but what our situation looks at, it looks like if you reduce the tax increase to something similar to what we did last year, which would be like one point five ish. What, what can we do and what can't we do? Is that something that we would be talking about in the future?
I think when we receive the long range fiscal plan, there's a series of scenarios that we put in there. That shows the, the impact of various levels of real estate tax. So it, it shows at zero, this is what it would look like in terms of, you know, year over year for the next five years. What the impact would be.
All right, thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman, Dr. Levinson?
Thank you, Dr. Bakker. Again, Mr. Saul, thank you very much for, for another enlightening presentation. Again, I've been through this a few, a couple of times already, a few times already, and I truly appreciate the level of detail that you go forth with this. To help us understand, know where things are coming from and where we're going to be in terms of projected revenues, expenditures, et cetera. I have just a, just a couple, couple areas I wanted to talk, first is a, is a quick confirmation. You mentioned that there's the, the expansion of the senior citizen property tax rebate program. You mentioned that for twenty one twenty two, you're looking for a, a full expansion to match that P A, so just to ensure, I believe, the, the current tier, top tier, and in our district, district rebate plan is twenty two thousand. You're proposing to expand to thirty five thousand?
That's correct. Presently, based on the, the fact that the included tax increase is up to the act one index, we are suggesting full expansion. Obviously, as if we were to decrease that increase, you know, decrease the recommended or suggested current increase where it is currently. We certainly would need to evaluate that as part of our process of sharpening our pencil on the revenue and expenditure side. I think we committed last year to some level of expansion, but presently, we can, we have included full expansion of that, that program to match the Commonwealth at thirty five thousand.
So that would be nice if we could certainly do that. And one, one thing, I know you probably don't have the information now, but, but at some point, I'd like to understand, you know, what the participation level was for, you know, the twenty twenty year, I know that's not done yet, but to have some idea of where that, where that's gone. And, you know, and then maybe then, you know, be able to do some projection for what we do in twenty twenty one under the proposed expansion. So again, I'd like to see that at some point as part of this process.
I will just comment, the challenge with that will be the, the, the window for for, for application extends beyond our, our, our budget deadline or near our budget deadline. So we will not have a complete data set for the twenty twenty year.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I fully understand that, but, but if there's something that we could, we could say about it, I'd just like to know where, where, where we, where things stand.
Sure, I've been trying to watch as they come through just to see how many we have that are in that, that expanded area that we've had. And so I think that will really be good for the board to see is just, here's the number of additional applications that be processed this year. That would not have been processed in the past, I think that will be helpful.
Absolutely, I appreciate that. The other thing I wanted to, to call out is that, you know, if you look at where we, you know, again, you I think the assumptions that you've made for looking at the potential revenues in all the different areas are quite, are reasonable. But if you look at where we stand with, with the projected revenue for twenty one twenty two. And the, the anticipated expenses for twenty one twenty two, it does appear that there's about a one million dollar shortfall. Between, between revenue and expenditures, is that about, about correct?
That's correct, about one million seventy thousand, seven, one, is that right? One, zero, seven, yes, one million seventy thousand.
And I, I know that I've asked this before, I forget whether it was in last month or January. You know, I, I don't know if, if it's premature at this point, or, or if you can make any comment at this point, but are there thoughts as to how we could potentially close that gap, are there any ideas yet as to how to do that, what areas to potentially?
Sure, absolutely, I, I think the first thing is, if you recall back to our previous conversation with regard to expenses. We know presently that there are areas of expenses that we need to revise, and we have committed to bringing those back to the board. At the first meeting in April, so that will be the first step, is making those revisions to again, see how much that gap closes. We will continue to monitor the revenue side, you know, a big variable and, and we may or may not know anything, but it's end of the, the budget process is that state revenue piece. You know, so again, I remind the board that, that this is a, a process and we continue down the road. And so we, we, we try to give you the expenditure update, the revenue update, we'll give you the long range plan, we'll make revisions. You know, certainly, April is where we probably need to get more serious about the kind of question that you're asking of, okay, now we're in April. And here's where we are, now, how are we going to close the gap now?
I, I understand that, again, it's, it's still, still a little early, but I was just wondering if you had anything off the top of your head that you could share. Maybe one thing to, that you might be able to speculate on, you know, again, you've made reasonable assumptions in a lot of these numbers. Do you think that, that there's any of those that, that are potentially conservative? But, but again, this may be part of the process that in the next month or two, you can, you can further refine those, those guesses.
In terms, are you referencing the revenues we, we went over tonight?
Yes, yes, again.
Yeah, I would, yes, I would say some of those are conservative, and without actually going back and looking over the list. I can't tell you, I will say that, for instance, the real estate tax is, is probably not, I, I don't know that there will be a lot of room for revising the at least the collection percentage, there is always the possibility, there's another interim billing in April. And so depending on how much additional development we've had, how much that adds to our assessment roles, there, there's still the opportunity for growth there as well. I think the earned income tax was, I mean, obviously, you saw that was a huge change from our prior year budget. I'm not sure that you'll see much, much revise there, some of the others maybe. You know, again, there's, there's always, there's, you, you can see how much this has changed from December until now. So certainly, there's the opportunity for some So certainly, there's the opportunity for some additional changes from now until May or June.
So so I guess really what I'm hearing is that, again, we we just need just a little more time to pass for us to to better understand where things, things are going to come in. I was just hoping seeing if there was more more comments that you can make at this point.
Sure. What I, what I always try to remember or remind people is, you know, the pitch, every day we move closer, the picture gets clearer. We get more revenue data from the current year that we can evaluate and project forward. We know our expenditure is just a little bit better. And and I guess back to your other question in terms of how to close the gap, I I will tell you, I mean, obviously, there's always things up my sleeve. So yes, I have some ideas, but I don't know if we need to use those ideas. And and they're not all of the best ideas, but they're ideas. So I would leave it at that for now.
Okay, well, I appreciate the comments and look forward to more information coming down the pipe. Thank you. That concludes my questions.
Thank you, Dr. Levinson. Dr. Munson?
Yeah, thank you. So thank you, Dr. Bakker, and to you, Mr. Saul, for another great presentation. I've seen, you know, a number of these now, and I learn something every time. And so I I I understand it better every time, but I still learn something every time. So I really appreciate that. And you know, could you bring, could you bring up the slide 14, which was a graph of the different economic downturns and the the projected recoveries? Because I wanted to ask you, I mean, one of the things I've appreciated about your stewardship of the budget is the is the forecasting that you you've done. And I know since COVID began, you have referred to the 2008 economic downturn as a kind of standard by which you were sort of making predictions about what we were going to be dealing with. And one of the questions I I had about this was sort of the degree to which you thought that that was still reasonable. And what what aspects of our budget are are most of the on the revenue side that we're talking about today are applicable. And the the pieces, the pieces that I'm trying to put together are, number one, the jobs information that you you presented previous to this slide, but then also the this graph and and putting that with this graph that shows that, you know, even four years out from the worst part of the pandemic, we're still projected to have worse jobs recovery than we did in 2008. I mean, you know, they're approaching parity, but it's not till year five that 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 the forecast matches what we actually saw in 2008. And I don't understand these numbers well enough to have a sense in my head sort of how that might impact your forecasting. And I wonder if you could say a little bit about that?
Sure. Trying to, trying to reflect on everything you said there. Early on, one of the things I remember specifically that that you asked and I responded to was you know, about this being a multi-year recovery. I will say that I have been a bit surprised at how, at what we can see here within year one. Again, when we were looking at this last year, it was April, May, June, and clearly, those were the worst months. And as we have continued to watch, and I I really have have focused tonight and and myself on this earned income tax number because it's really was performing differently than I had anticipated. In 2008, when we saw those numbers decline, you can see that it they declined and they it it was a slow return where this this was really a a quick return, at least from those sharp numbers, if that makes sense. So I think in terms of of like, I have been, I have been surprised a little bit by what we've seen over a one-year period. I still maintain that, you know, this is a multi-year recovery, but but not as bad as we had anticipated last year. I mean, obviously, there's will continue to be an economic effect. The only thing I can can reflect on in terms of the 2020 versus the 2008, as I remember 2008, I mean, the entire economy was affected. So both those low wage earners, and I, you know, I use that because that's how the IFO has characterized this, is, you know, low wage earners have been the most affected. Where I feel like in 2008, it it was, it was across the spectrum. And so while unemployment will will you know, four years out will be higher, I wonder if we will see the same economic impact because of the differential between the types of jobs that are unemployed. And I can't, obviously, I can't answer that. I don't know if it will be different or not. Certainly, I feel like the recovery we've seen and in the strong earned income tax receipts is very different than than we anticipated. And I think if if you know, those higher wage earners had been affected, we would see a, we would see a bigger impact in our in our earned income tax. Sorry, go ahead.
No, I I was only gonna, I was only going to say that sounds, it it makes me more confident that I'm understanding that this story here because it it does seem that the 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 different ways, the different sectors of the economy that were affected in these two, in these two will affect school district finances differently precisely because school district finances are based so heavily on local property taxes. And that affects different groups of people differently. So I appreciate, I appreciate that. I also, I had two, well, two sort of specific follow ups. I mean, the one is I wanted to echo Dr. Levinson's hope, but to just sort of express desire to prioritize the maximum expansion of the tax rebate program. I think that that's important to the community. And so that that should be sort of one of the things that that we really prioritize. Then the other, I guess, the last thing is a question about the budgeting of state funding. I appreciate and value the conservative approach to budgeting that that you and your team do. And I think that that is the right approach. At the same time, I, you know, we also want the most accurate numbers that that we can have kind of without going over, right? And I I wonder if the zeroed state funding is excessively conservative in this case. I mean, that is, you know, in your discussion of that section, you talked about sort of you you that we need to sort of take into account the political environment. And it seems to me, for example, that the governor's office, the leadership in the governor's office and the leadership in the state legislature have remained the same, more or less, for the last six years. Is it, is it not reasonable then to sort of project a change in state funding that is the average or 75% of the average over the last six years? And and would that not not sort of give us a slightly better picture without ruining that conservatism that that you have built in here?
That's, that's an excellent question. Once upon a time, I I had discussions with a with a legislator about this very topic, and he said, well, you know, you get about 2% every year, don't you? Just plan on 2%. I think the challenge this year that is different from the past years is, you know, we 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 now have the the S R one funds have been distributed and are being spent. The S R two funds are available. And it is, I'm told it's quite likely that there's going to be an S R three, you know, federal federal funding package, number three, that has the potential to to be approved later this week. The question is, does the General Assembly say that, yeah, you've gotten a lot of money via federal funding this year, and our state budget is, we're is challenging this year, and so we just can't afford an increase, but we know you've gotten funds. And I think that's where the challenge is. And I think it's a bit premature in the state budget process to make a determination. So if we if we added 2%, we would, we would potentially, or 1%, we would potentially have to be prepared to roll that back. But I don't think it's out of the question at the end of the day. Let's let's say maybe that's one of the things up my sleeve that we we haven't pulled out yet.
Okay, I mean, I appreciate that. And I hadn't seen the tie in between this and the way in which, I mean, the, you know, past history, I mean, my, I think it was when I first came on the board, the district was faced with this situation, which I think is parallel, where the Corbett administration essentially shortchanged the districts, the amount of money, one-time money that the federal, federal authorities had put in. And boy, we we would really be in a tough spot if that happened because we're using these one-time monies for one-time purposes and to sort of lose that state support of local taxpayers even more would would be really tough. So I I guess I guess you're splitting the difference, and I appreciate that. So thank you. And that's all, that's all I have, Dr. Bakker.
Thank you, Dr. Munson. Mr. Byrd?
Yes, I just want to thank Mr. Saul's great presentation tonight. One of the things that I wanted to talk about is the basic education funding from the state and also the the special ed funding. I coughed it on up in the expenditure side, but these numbers seem to be the same. I guess what I'm looking at and kind of echo some of my other colleagues, what can we do to get more basic education funding from the state? Is that something in our district? I know one of the expenses we talked about is the charter schools. We've gone up about $2 million. Is that included in that? Is that increase? So what can we do to maybe get more funding from the state? Or there is a funding coming, other than the short-term funding that's talking about, I'm talking long-term, that you think about for the carriers or the corporate relief funds? Maybe you can just found on that, Mr. Saul.
Yeah, I think that, you know, fundamentally, the the way to the way to increase the 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 basic education funding is is through advocacy efforts of the board, you know, to advocate to your local legislators that, you know, there are needs, there are costs that are increasing that we can't that are out of our control, such as, you know, cyber, cyber cyber tuition rate increases. You know, our mandated costs related to special education, our mandated costs related to to the public school employees' retirement system. You know, I I think that the governor presented something that that does what you're suggesting in terms of a significant, of a significant increase in basic education funding. You know, whether or not there's an appetite for that type of increase this year, I I'm not sure. But I think fundamentally, you know, the fundamentally, it goes back to advocacy because we we here locally can control to some extent our local revenues, but but that those state revenues are are really out of our control and are really under the the purview of the General Assembly.
Historically, have those numbers gone down, the contribution versus state versus local revenue? If you look at it past history, have they gone into a different trend where more the the burden has gone onto our local taxpayers? Have you seen that in the last 10 years? I want to know a short time, maybe you can reflect on that.
Yeah, I mean, I I think you can look at many areas of 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 that public policy. And yes, I think that the the local taxpayers show tend to continue to shoulder more of that burden, whether it was what Dr. Munson referenced earlier in 2012, when the the federal funds that were being used to supplant the education budget went away and and they weren't replaced by any state dollars. You know, certainly, our our local taxpayers picked up some of that burden. There used to be additional funds for charter school to help offset charter school tuition. Those funds went away. And I think as they went away, again, the the local taxpayers shouldered more of the of that burden. So I I think, you know, we can cite a number of examples where, yes, I that that continues to to be the case.
I want to thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your comments. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd. Mr. Champagne?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Saul. Just one is a clarifying question. Back on slide nine, the pie chart that you showed. When you say tax rate, does that really the meant to say the change in the tax rate, the the 3.6% millage increase? Is that, is that correct?
I was just gonna pull it up so we can all look at it and comment. Sorry, I have to go back through these. Yes, the tax rate is the millage rate. That's correct.
That's, yeah, okay. So the the one point, yeah, because the slide that I read was concerned, the 1.9% is really the the assessment.
Assessment, yes.
Yeah.
I I updated that.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Good catch. I was reviewing it today, and I said that word, and I forget what I had tax rate. I think I had, what did I have in there?
You had millage.
Millage, yeah. And I was wrong. I apologize to the board.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I understood it correctly and the change. So tax rate is the tax increase. Assessment is the 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 assessment change that you reflected in the 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 underlying, you know, tax base. And then collection is you you backed off. You said it was a 1.5% year-over-year increase, but then you basically subtracted 4 tenths of a percent from that. Is that correct? To get down to the 1.1%?
Yes.
When you, when you said you 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 went from 96.2 to 95.8, is that?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So I've got that correct. And I appreciate Dr. Munson's question on the state budget because that's the one of the questions I've had. So I and I appreciate your your feedback on that. And just for my clarification, I know you mentioned this last time. How much in the proposed charter school reform bill that's floating around, would that impact us on both the revenue and the expenditure side again? I can't remember the the number that is out there.
I I apologize. I had it, I had that information in front of me for the last meeting. I I can probably grab it here and and I'm happy to do that.
It's not important right now. If you can just feed that back to me, because I know that that would help close this deficit because I because the way I've, I think, Dr. Levinson mentioned, the deficit is a little over a million dollars, and that's even with a 3.6% increase. So if we're going to look at something obviously is lower than 3.6%, we've got a ways to go. And then the last question I had on IDA funding, I know that's a federal line item that we get through the IU. I can't recall, has there been any movement in the federal government on revising IDEA? I know that one time there was some talk of that, but I haven't heard anything recently. I didn't know if you had heard anything where they were trying to move toward more fully funding IDEA to help on special needs areas.
No, I am. I have not heard. And again, I think the challenge currently is with all of the dollars that are being, that are flowing through the S R
Right.
S R grant. I I think again, that the focus or the the commentary is going to be, well, school districts are receiving significant federal, additional federal funding here. But no, I have not heard anything additional.
Said, you know, it's 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 a double-edged sword. Yeah, it's great to get it, but if you use it and to offset ongoing expenditures, you've got a gap to make up in the future. That's my question. Thank you very again for everything again.
Thank you, Mr. Champagne. Mr. Jankowski?
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Saul. I'd like to echo the comments from my colleagues. Your presentations are always very well-prepared and understandable. So so thank you for that. I I have a couple of questions. One, with respect to the local revenue and the the earned income taxes, the the percent increase that you you have budgeted for 2122, how does that increase compared to the prior past couple of years increases that you've you've budgeted for? Because my 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 question or my concern is, you know, in your statements, you said that, you know, well, wait, wait, while wages have gone up, you know, the employment may not increase at 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 the same pace. And and, you know, I question whether increase in wages will continue at the at the pace that they currently have, you know, in in the most recent recovery and opening of of businesses. And you know, with the loss of enclosure of businesses and and the ability to and, and the ability to, to, you know, reopen, whether they're, you know, what the, what the expectation is for, for job growth and, and, you know, my concern is whether the, the estimate for the earned income taxes is, is, is higher than, than might be realistic. So.
Yeah, I, I, I guess my comment to that is last year when we were in, in April, when we looked at our budget, we actually reduced earned income taxes, if I remember correctly, uh, nearly 16% from what we had budgeted, what we had originally budgeted. Um, so there was a significant decrease and that was based on what we were seeing at the time of, you know, 30% unemployment in some, some areas, some sectors. Um, you know, questions about whether that would be sustained for a long period of time. And so really what, what this, in your right, this is a significant increase, but this is really restoring us back up to a level closer to what we're actually seeing. Um, I would not characterize this as aggressive, meaning saying that we're going to see significant increases beyond what we're presently seeing. This is really a maintenance number from what we're anticipating this year, really the same for next year, which would, uh, take into account the, the, the things that you've mentioned.
Thank you. That, that's helpful. And then with respect to the state portion of, of revenues, and, and some of this is from my understanding, the people transportation subsidy. You know, th- this isn't a, 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 a large amount in the scheme of things, but is that always a, a backwards-looking subsidy? Because, you know, it seems odd that, you know, last year was, was obviously a, an atypical school year and, and it almost seems like we're getting penalized for something that was out of our control. Whereas, you know, had the pandemic not occurred, the, the, the number of students using, you know, transportation, I, I would imagine would have been static from the prior year, if not increased with, you know, the number of new homes being built i- in, in our district. And, and it almost seems like a, you know, like I said, like a, like a penalty, that it's not really a fair, a fair assessment, um, for reality. I mean, is there, is, is there any way around that or is that pretty much set? That's, that's what it's based on and, and we just have to live with it?
Yeah. So, so a, a couple of thoughts regarding that. First, yes, it is always a backward-facing, um, subsidy. What happens is at the end of the school year, we report, uh, the actual, the actual experience, if you will, from that year. And then that is processed throughout, you know, the, the fall into the winter by PDE and then that is the basis for your subsidy for that year. So, so it, it looks back one year because of the timing of the reporting. Obviously you couldn't report before the end of the year. And so, so I guess to that piece of your question, that's why it's a backward-facing. For last year, for school year 20, uh, 1920, when we were closed for a portion of the year, um, the General Assembly passed the law that said, um, it said essentially if we pay our contractors, that we can get our full subsidy for that year. And you'll recall that we did make payments to our contractors and therefore we should receive, um, full subsidy for that and that would be in the current year. For 21, 22, obviously that'll be a look back to the current year. We've, as I mentioned earlier, we've been closed a number of days. We have not paid our contractor for those days. So, it, it, to your, to your question about, is that unfair because we're being penalized? Well, we haven't paid our contractor because we were closed and they didn't transport for us. So we actually have saved in that expense. And so the Commonwealth obviously is not going to reimburse us on something we didn't spend, we, we didn't pay for. Maybe that makes sense?
Absolutely. No, thanks for that clarification. And then just finally, um, I had, Mr. Champagne had the same request as, as I did with respect to the charter school funding and, and what impact, you know, that would have. I'd, I'd be interested in, in understanding those numbers too.
Okay.
All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jankowski. Um, I'd just like to echo the comments of the other board members, uh, uh, on the quality of these, uh, budget presentations. Every year you, you do a better job and, and, uh, streamlining the process and making it more clear. So I appreciate it. It really helps us to do our jobs better. So, um, moving on to the district update, Mrs. Campbell.
Again, um, great job, Bob, in terms of giving that high level and actually a lot of detail in terms of the, the revenue. So thank you also for your work with that portion of our budget presentation. Um, I want to start off by congratulating one of our elementary music teachers. In particular, I'd like to recognize Allison Lewis. She is, um, one of our music teachers at West Coastville Elementary and she recently earned her National Board Certification. Um, so that's quite a prestigious honor and we're certainly very proud of her work there. I'd also like to share that the EMEA's History Day Club, um, is pleased to announce that 14 of its members will move on to compete in this year's Region Six History Day Competition. And, um, as, as many things during the pandemic, the, the competition this year will be a virtual event that will take place in about two weeks on Saturday, March 20th. So I'd like to recognize those students who will be representing EMEA's High School at the Virtual History Day, including Adam Gregorick, Heather Fabriti, Kayla Fanning, Cameron Fanning, Samantha Loper, Jack Fremont, Lynn Liu, Andrew Maury, Nadia Anthony, Julia McDonald, Clara Kennedy and Sadie Kennedy and Lauren Kirchner. So again, congratulations to those students from EMEA's High School. I'm also excited to share that our, that nutrition group selected our EMEA's High School kitchen staff as the recipient of their TNG Cares Award for the winter quarter. In particular, our EMEA's High School staff, um, have gone well above and beyond when handing out meals and when, when preparing and handing out meals for our high school students. And so it's really interesting because we've received multiple parent emails, calls and notes thanking our EMEA's High School kitchen staff for their hard work. So great, great job to their, um, to that team as well. In addition, I'd like to recognize our EMEA's High School journalists for winning 12 awards at the recent Pennsylvania News Media Association, um, Keystone Contest. And so if you, on our, our high school website, we have recognized and I would like to call out our EMEA's High School student journalists as well for their outstanding recognition. And, and really if you follow our EMEA's High School Journalism Club, you know that this is a group that annually, um, is recognized for their outstanding accomplishments. Um, those students, again, from EMEA's High School are Ryland Bassett, Katie Toronto, Victoria Rivera, Chrissy Heilman, Bella Lees, Greta Miller, Heather Fabriti, Madison Morrow, Peyton McGlory, Kaitlyn O'Brien, Eric De La Rosa, Aiden Springs, Jacob Wellsco, Eleanor Krillman, Riley Deng, Adithi Kamihara, Ari Bowman, Thomas Hartle, Malika Anthony, Bethany Brown, Alice Adams, Nate Garcia, and of course their advisor, Mrs. Rehman. Also at EMEA's High School, a lot of exciting things happening at EMEA's High School this month. Um, the Mud Club presented their annual Empty Bowls Contest, Empty Bowls Event. Um, and this year the event will be held virtually. And I encourage everyone, if you've not done so already, please check out the Mud Club website. There's a link to it on our, our district homepage as well as the EHS homepage to view the bowls that are created by our, our student artists and then for sale. Um, and they're released for purchase each week and literally they like sell out on a weekly basis. Um, the great thing about this event is that all proceeds support the food program of the Angel Network. So it's really a great way to, um, purchase some of our amazing student artwork as well as to support a great cause in terms of our Angel Networks. I'm going to continue to remind our community, um, probably almost every board meeting as we progress throughout the spring, that our East Penn kindergarten registration for the upcoming school year is now live. Parents can access the online registration information on the district as well as all of our building websites. It is an online registration process and we really tried to simplify it, make it as easy as possible for our families to register their kindergarteners for the upcoming school year. And finally, hot off the presses, a congratulations goes out to Griffin Lang, Griffin Lake. He is a 10th grader at EMEA's High School and we were just notified this afternoon that he is the individual state champion for rifle. Um, again, we're incredibly proud of Griffin for his outstanding sportsmanship, what has certainly been a unique athletic season, um, and admire his, his hard work and his precise aim. And so great job, Griffin. And certainly as a 10th grader, we look forward to many more great seasons having him with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Campbell. Are there any questions, uh, on the district update? Uh, then moving on to, uh, health and safety plans and, uh, update on instructional models. Mrs. Campbell, will you be leading out in the presentation?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to get us started here. So we, our administrative team is, is pleased to, to provide our board as well as the community with an update of our continued planning for spring of 2021. As a reminder, at our last meeting, we shared with the public the factors that impact our decision-making and those are there as a reminder of what we've already communicated. Over the past two weeks, our Health and Safety Task Force has continued to meet to review these factors. And tonight we're bringing forth a proposal for our elementary students to return for five, five-day instruction, beginning at the beginning of April. So this evening, we're really looking for feedback on our proposal from the school board. And, and the board will not take any formal action tonight, but what we will actually do then is bring a resolution to the board at the next meeting on March 22nd, again, for formal action from the board. As part of our presentation this evening, we will review the feedback that we received from our family commitment survey that we administered last week. Um, I just want to say as well, we sincerely appreciate this, the community's incredible response. We had, um, I believe about over 7,000 responses out of a total district of about 8,200 students. And so that is an incredible response rate, which was very helpful in helping us to make decisions and come back so quickly, um, with a plan. We will also review some of the mitigation factors, including staff vaccinations and we'll talk about those, those vaccinations and other mitigation factors in greater detail throughout the presentation that ultimately impacted our proposal for a five-day-a-week program at the elementary level. I want to begin by briefly reviewing the current instructional models that are outlined in the East Penn Health and Safety Plan. Specifically, I'd like to call the board at, the boards and communities' attention to the fact that our current plan specifies six-feet social distancing. And this is important that I, I want to bring this to our attention because you are going to hear us speak throughout the presentation this evening, that we are recommending a change in the social distancing that we've outlined in our, in our Health and Safety Plan to actually specify three to six-foot social distancing. And again, throughout the night tonight, we're going to talk about our rationale for that recommended change. I'd also like to highlight that our current instructional models include traditional learning, meaning that five-day-a-week instruction. And as of right now, our Health and Safety Plan identifies that only in the low or no spread. And again, that's important to understand because throughout the presentation tonight, we're going to talk about also adding that traditional learning option to the minimal or moderate spread. So when we talk about level of community transmission, for example, using terms such as substantial spread or moderate spread, we also wanted to spend just a brief amount of time updating the board or reviewing this information with the board. When we talk about instructional models, we do so within the context of level of community transmission. And this level of transmission is defined by the CDC and is based on two metrics, including the incidence rate per 100,000 residents in the most recent seven days. And then also the PCR rate within the most, within the most current seven days as well. As of today, and we have this information over here on the right, as of today, Lehigh County remains in the substantial level of transmission. When you look at those two metrics there, you can see that the PCR rate of 6.6%, one of those metrics falls within the moderate, but both metrics would have to fall within the moderate level in order for the county to make that official transition. So again, it's important that, um, as of today, we are in substantial. And we are going to be talking about the, the recommendations for instructional models of five-day-a-week. As of right now, we are talking about that proposal happening when we shift to the moderate level of spread.
So this brings us to the results of the family survey. When we shared the survey, we had no idea the vaccination announcement by Governor Wolf would be made days later. The beginning of the survey asked for feedback around possible scenarios pertaining to community spread and vaccination of staff. We had over 7,400 responses. As you can see, when families were asked how they would prefer their students' building finish out the year, almost 60% indicated their choice would be a five-day model. A little over 15% indicated their choice would be hybrid and almost 27% would choose to finish the year fully remote. On this slide, parents were asked to agree, disagree with their level of comfort at three different degrees of social distancing in moderate spread. At six feet, at a minimum of three feet and to the greatest extent possible. Approximately 5,800 families indicated they were comfortable at six feet in moderate spread. Approximately 4,100 families indicated they were comfortable at a minimum of three feet. And approximately 3,800 families indicated they were comfortable with social distancing to the greatest extent possible. This question was along the same lines, but included level of comfort after faculty and staff had the opportunity to be vaccinated. A little over 6,000 families indicated they were comfortable at six feet in moderate spread. Close to 4,500 families indicated they were comfortable at a minimum of three feet. And approximately 4,000 families indicated they were comfortable with social distancing to the greatest extent possible. At the end of this survey, we asked families specifically about their commitment if we could offer a five-day model. On this slide, you'll see a breakdown of families if a five-day model is in place in moderate spread. It is important to note that families have the option to choose multiple checkboxes in this response. 2,495 families are committed to remote learning to finish the school year. 5,036 families are committed to in-person learning to finish the school year with a breakdown of comfort at the three previously mentioned degrees of soc- social distancing. We asked this question to confirm numbers for both remote and in-person learning to determine the feasibility of a five-day model at each level. The data we shared in this presentation will be shared tomorrow on our EPSD COVID page. We will also add an additional breakdown by building to these slides as it pertains to the five-day learning model at each of the 10 buildings.
Okay. As you take a look here, the next slide is entitled, "What Has Changed." Um, and so the CDC has come up with updated guidance. So as we look through a lot of the updated guidance, one of the key things is we note that the CDC does support, when in the moderate level of transmission, physical distancing to the greatest extent possible if six feet is not possible. So that's definitely a change. Um, when we started this presentation, Mrs. Campbell did speak to, um, the physical distancing, um, and where our current plan is at six feet. And so looking at this and the physical distancing change and the recommendation there, when in moderate, is something that's important for us to keep in mind. Research also tells us that people ages 18 and under have a lower risk of severe outcomes from COVID. With, within our task force and the doctors that work with us, um, really there's been support, um, to, to look at our youngest learners and getting them back into the classroom. And so our doctors, um, those on the Health and Safety Task Force- And so our doctors, um, those on the Health and Safety Task Force, which include, um, uh, parents, include teachers, also include administrators, as well as the medical experts, do support the return of, um, our youngest learners. And of course, do support, as we talked about earlier, the three to six feet of social distancing. One other key piece is the American Academy of Pediatrics. Um, when we're talking about our youngest learners in particular, it's important to note that they do support using three feet of social distancing between students. Knowing that, um, you know, six feet or the greatest extent possible is, is something that, um, we always shoot for. But three feet still does minimize risk. Um, and to try and get, um, students back into the classroom, it is supported to take that social distancing number down to three feet.
Our ventilation systems in the facilities of East Penn School District have been renovated and to meet the codes from 1989 through 2010. Although those codes may be outdated, it does not mean that our ventilation system is obsolete or non-functioning, or cannot accommodate different parameters that we need to, um, that need to occur to meet our current requirements. We can easily operate our outside air dampers from a minimum of 20%, which most of them were designed for, to 100%, allowing much more outside air to enter the buildings and circulate throughout. Does that mean that we can't do anything differently? No, we, we can always look at other options. We can look at options regarding room air purifiers. Um, when we look at an air purifier, though, we need to look at the KDR rating or the clean air delivery rate. So for the size of a room, our typical rooms might be 20 by 20 or 3,200 square, uh, feet, cubic feet. You take the CFM, you multiply by 60, divided by your cubic feet, and that gives you the air cha- air changes that you need for an hour. Most of our buildings were designed with three air changes an hour in each classroom. Currently, recommendations are four to six air exchanges per a classroom. So again, how do we accomplish that? It's either using more outside air, trying to find an air purifier in the classroom that will benefit and add additional air exchanges, or there are other ways of ionization, which is charging both negatively and positively the oxygen ions in the air to help eliminate contaminants. And they also then help particulates gather together and drop out of the air so they are not recirculated. Another, another option could possibly be the, um, there's a, there's a process where you take oxygen and the humidity in the air and naturally make hydrogen peroxide, which helps clean the environment of the classroom. Although those are options, we are currently planning to do a facility study. And while we're doing that study, we plan on looking at our ventilation systems and what we should do to bring them up to par or up to current codes. So to jump, put the, you know, to jump ahead and try to mitigate something right now, while we're going to be looking at something long-term, may not be the best interest of our, um, district. Some of the costs that could be associated with those, um, either a, an air purifier or the hydrogen vary anywhere from $300,000 up to half a million dollars if we want to look at every classroom that we have. The lunches for the elementary classes may be one logistical, um, one of my largest logistical issues that I need to address. Because while we have, um, cafeterias designed at one size, and if we bring back all the students and we try to keep them at six feet, we will need to figure out alternatives for our, um, to, for lunches. Be it that the students eat in the classrooms, if we bring tables out in pods like at Shoemaker and they split between the classrooms and the pods, the cafeterias, maybe we will have to redo some of the, um, gym classes so we can expand the cafeterias to be both cafeteria and expand into the gym. Or if we look at using, uh, outside seating areas, be it open air at benches on nice days, or if we need to purchase and install tents to help accommodate the amount of students that we would be serving lunches to.
Regarding transportation, as you may recall from earlier last year, when we talked about this in the summertime, typical school bus capacity is 77 passengers. At a maximum of two students per seat, that total capacity would be 44 students for the spring of 2021 on each one of those 77 passenger buses. No students would sit in the front seat of the bus, and that would provide the social distancing from the driver. And assigned seats, as usual, would happen with the students, and that would assist us in any contact tracing that would need to happen. It would also allow siblings to be seated together, obviously, being from the same family and the same household. The nice thing about the spring would give us the opportunity, especially starting this week, in the middle of the week, to start opening the windows in the buses, allowing once again for that free air circulation going on in the bus. And buses would continue to be sanitized daily between the runs. We did look at each one of our, uh, bus runs in, for the elementary level, and found that we would be able to successfully have those students on the current bus runs, except for two runs in which we would, we could easily shuffle around, um, to the capacity on two of the buses that aren't as full, that are in the same area. So it would, it would work with our current char- transportation plan. As far as the masking protocol goes for the, the PA universal face, uh, face covering order is still in effect. All the students and the staff would continue to wear a face covering that covers both their nose and their mouth on all school district transportation, including the bus stop and at the, at the, uh, in, not only in the bus, but at the bus stop. Students may remove their face coverings indoors or outdoors when seated or standing, provided that there are both six feet of social distancing. And if there is an approval for a break, for a mask break, not to exceed 10 minutes, but also maintaining that six-foot social distancing. And then the students and staff may remove face coverings, obviously, to drink, and when they are social distancing, six feet or more. The need to, the need for six feet social distancing during lunches would require that alternative seating in which Mr. Anushko already addressed. And we would continue with our plan of education through our nurses, reminding individuals about what types of material, what types of mask, how to fit the mask properly. And there's a, a link in there which would show the correct wearing of a mask, which basically is the loops and then the covering of the nose and the mouth, covering any kind of space that would allow the escape of air.
Another mitigation factor that has been, um, recently available to us is vaccinations for all of our staff. And on March 3rd, Governor Wolf announced that the single-dose Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccines would be prioritized for educators. And that rollout plan includes the intermediate units across the state will be working with their member districts to coordinate that vaccination process for educators. So I want to just briefly, um, give accolades to Dr. Ibe and Mrs. Talapan from CLIU 21 for their outstanding work, um, literally in just a few number of days in terms of deploying large numbers of vaccines and coordinating that effort to all of our member districts. As part of this vaccination process, the state recently surveyed all educational staff members to identify who has already been vaccinated, as well as who is interested in the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. And you can see there that as part of the initial round of vaccination, East Penn has been allocated about 400 vaccination slots. Um, and, and I'm happy to share that as part of that initial round of vaccinations, we are, we in East Penn were able to prioritize all of our elementary staff, as well as prioritizing our special education teachers and staff who work with our five-day-a-week program. Um, and that includes, when we talk about staff, certainly, we mean professional staff, support staff. We've looked at bus drivers for our elementary runs, um, cafeteria employees. We really are talking about all individuals who have, um, who are in an elementary building, working with our students. I will also share, as part of the initial vaccination round, we were able to include some of our middle school staff. And so that is certainly a factor that we will continue to monitor, that we'll talk about later in the presentation with regard to timing of further, timing of our plan in which we might be able to bring back students beyond just our elementary students at this point.
I apologize, I was muted. We are continuing to evaluate bringing, um, our special ed students back into the district. And so currently, we have 1,464 special ed students. And so it is important to remember that that number also includes our speech-only students. So they also have IEPs under IDEA. We currently have 47 out of the 590 students at the elementary level attending five days, and that is 8%. We currently have 131 students who are fully remote at the elementary level. At the middle level, we have 136 students out of 431 attending. Uh, we have 147 who are fully remote. And at the high school level, we have 74 out of 443. So that's 16.7% of students at the high school, and we have 226 who are fully remote. If we look at our ESL population, we currently have 123 students. Um, nine of 73 students at the elementary level are attending, so that's 12%. We have 23 who are fully remote. And at the secondary level, we have 12 students out of 50. So 24% of the secondary students are attending, and we have 28 who are fully remote.
Okay, so shifting back to looking at the social distancing and classroom capacity. If you look at the three-feet minimum at center of social distancing, so a shift to three feet of social distancing, what you're looking at there really, um, at the elementary level, it's, it's approximately 100% of students could return, um, that would want to choose to return. I put approximate because, you know, we're not 100% sure, um, but we're in the range there of very close to 100%. And so, um, looking at the numbers, um, in our elementary classrooms, there may be just a few that we'd have to, um, adjust or look at closely to ensure that we'd be at three feet. The middle level, again, approximately 100% of return if we're in a traditional model. And at the high school, either hybrid or traditional, really depends on, um, some numbers. But could, there could be use for alternative spaces in all of these. If, of course, um, if we'd have some classes, that would be, um, you know, closer than, than the three feet. At six feet, it does, um, cause a, a much bigger barrier, um, to return students. Um, I will talk about in a minute that at the elementary level, we could bring back, um, K to two students. Um, there is an option for that. Um, and then we would have about 50% of, um, the three through five students that would be able to return in the building, staying at the six feet of social distancing. Um, you, you're looking at approximately 50% at the middle level, 50% and in a hybrid model. And at the high school, 50% in the hybrid model. So then we move to, um, two options that we have to return our youngest learners. So at the elementary level, if we continue to keep six feet of social distancing, which is in our current Health and Safety Plan, um, we could return K to two students. We could do this as early as March 22nd. What's promising about this is it does get our, our youngest students back as soon as possible. Some constraints, um, with this model is a portion of the students would need to, to change teachers for the remainder of the year. We would have to shuffle teachers to a different location. For the most part, you'd be looking at in classrooms that have a removable wall. You would move, let's say, for example, a kindergarten classroom. And let's say there's two fifth-grade classrooms that have a removable wall. You could move one kindergarten classroom to the, the fifth grade, the two fifth-grade rooms, open the wall. And then you'd have to relocate that fifth-grade classroom to possibly the kindergarten room. And then you'd relocate the other fifth-grade classroom to another room, um, and which we would, we would figure out and we would be able to, um, uh, make that work. Again, um, that does cause some disruption, uh, in the building and with the students, but it does get students back. This model would also, or could also require, um, hiring additional staff. As we look at it, there, there would be a need, um, based on keeping the six feet of social distancing and the classroom capacities. Shifting to the second option, um, as I mentioned earlier, our Health and Safety Task Force does support the move to a three to six feet of social distancing and does support the return of K to five students. So taking a look at this model, um, we would phase this model in. K to two could come back, um, as early as March 29th. And all, um, the students, we'd phase in the rest of three, four, and five. So all K through five would return on April 6th. This gives us an opportunity, um, to have some students coming back, some of the education on masking and other things, and the other mitigation measures that Ms., uh, Dr. Mirabella and others, others mentioned. Also, just making sure, um, we, as we return students, um, back to use of hallway and classroom and make sure the entire class is now together, uh, that phased-in approach is just something we feel is, is appropriate as students return, instead of bringing everyone back all at once, um, and trying to go through the safety measures with everybody. What's promising about this approach, um, it gets our K to, K to five students back as a whole. Um, it returns more students. The students can stay with their current teacher because the idea would be that they would stay, um, in their current classroom with their current teacher. So, um, hybrid students that are already assigned to that teacher would go, um, uh, but would all go back to that teacher. Of course, remote teachers would need to change, um, but for the most part, students would remain, um, with their current teacher. There'd be very few relocations. Again, looking at some of the classroom sizes, there may be some. But again, for the, this, it's, uh, significantly less disruptions, um, than the other model. The constraints with this one is there needs to be a change to the Health and Safety Plan because as I've mentioned several times, um, the current plan has six feet of social distancing. So to make this work, there needs to be a shift.
This is, uh, just showing the vaccinations required in our different labor groups in order to move forward with our five-day model for the secondary level. So at the middle level, we need a maximum of 288 vaccines, and at the high school level, a maximum of 320 vaccines, uh, in order to, uh, get more specific about our plan to do that return.
Okay, so, um, you see in red, um, Mrs. Campbell started the presentation with explaining what that traditional learning was only in the low, uh, no-spread area. Um, the, the Health and Safety Task Force met on Friday, and the recommendation would be to move traditional learning to the moderate level, so that we could return students, and that would be at a three-feet of social distancing. So the changes of traditional learning to moderate and the change to three feet, three to six feet of social distancing would allow for us to return our K to five students with the Model 2 that was on, uh, a few slides ago.
So to wrap up, again, this evening, we are, we are sharing the proposal with the board and the community. We certainly value and welcome the feedback. Based on that feedback, we will certainly continue to, with our more detailed planning. You can see that that planning includes that on the 22nd, we would bring forth a revised Health and Safety Plan for the district that speaks to three to six-foot social distancing and also specifies traditional five-day learning in the moderate level of transmission. Our other mech- recommendation would be that, of course, we would continue to follow the PA mask order. I just wanted to clarify that for the community, this was something that we did get quite a bit of feedback on. While we asked the question about preference for double masking, at this point, administration would not recommend that as an additional mitigation factor. And then certainly, we would, um, provide the board at the March 22nd meeting with an update on any changes in our, or any more specific information, specific to a secondary level model. Again, that really is also based on that vaccination opportunity that we've talked about earlier. And the other piece, as we continue our planning, after that board vote, um, on the on the twenty second, based on the outcome of that vote, we would then hope to move forward with one final. What we're referring to as a family confirmation form. So certainly, we would make this one as simple as possible. And we would then do one final reach out to all of our elementary families. And this would be the final confirmation of learning choice model for the remainder of the school year. Again, based on board action on the twenty second, we would hope to be giving our families the final choice of a five day a week program or a remote program, and that would be their option that 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 would be their choice then. Their learning model for the remainder of the school year. The one piece that I want to want to mention as well is we would also include another one final question with regard to transportation. And so I want to just really express our appreciation to our families who have really been tremendous throughout the school year in terms of making transportation arrangements for students. And so when our families have been able to do that, it really has enabled us to do some degree of social distancing on a school bus, which we've all had conversations in terms of is a really difficult thing to accomplish. So this is just another plea to our families to if you're able to continue to work with us and provide that transportation, it really does help out. And then what we would also do is you can see there our plan would be, as Mr. Pavolitis just highlighted, that on March twenty ninth, we would plan to transition back our kindergarten through second grade students for, again, the start of their five day a week instruction. We specifically split up the K to two and the three to five phasing, just so we can provide those transitions for students. Particularly our youngest students, because we recognize we have kindergarteners who are coming to five day a week instruction in school. And this will be their first time having that experience. And certainly, it's important for our youngest learners to just transition back into some of those routines and patterns that will be very new for them. And we also want to give our teachers and our staff time for that transition as well. And then the following week, April sixth, their third through fifth grade peers would return to their elementary buildings. And so our hope is that the week of April sixth, we can say that we have successfully implemented five day a week instruction for our youngest learners, which we've said would be the priority, and that's where we'll begin. And then certainly, we will continue to, you've heard us talk throughout the presentation this evening in terms of there are certain follow ups that we now need to do. And those follow ups will happen as quickly as this week. And so we have meetings continued to plan. Some of the topics that we've discussed in terms of what lunches will look like at the elementary level. Also, really potentially looking at problem solving at the secondary level as well in terms of what might lunches look like there if we're able to bring our students back in the future. We have meetings planned with all of our building leaders. We will continue to communicate with all of our teachers, again, recognizing that our elementary staff is impacted first. So continue conversations with our teachers as well as the representatives of our our union and labor groups so that we can continue having those planning conversations together. And then our goal would be that, again, on the twenty second, we'll bring that updated health and safety plan to you for for that final for ideally a vote on that evening. So at this point, we're certainly happy to hear your feedback, answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mrs. Campbell. Oh, I'm in full screen mode. I see that there are board members with with questions. Ms. Winch.
Hello, I don't have a whole lot of questions. I just I just want to share my feedback. Vaccination for our education workers is a major game changer for me. I plan to support the recommendation to reduce the social distancing to three to six feet and low to moderate community spread. But I would also be interested in hearing the thoughts of the Health and Safety Committee about keeping at least our youngest and targeted learners in a five day program, even in a substantial threat spread. And that's assuming that we would have that continued backstop from the state with that fourteen day case count per building. I'm also really encouraged hearing about the ventilation remedies. I obviously, as soon as it warms up, I want, I I hope we can get this. Vents open till a hundred percent. I'm encouraged and I about lots of things, but I also want to make sure that we're giving our staff some resources. About helping not just each other acclimate to being back five days. But also, some of this, for some of these very young learners, this could be a real culture shock for them. They've never been in such a busy classroom. Or it's been a long time since they've been in such a busy classroom, and they've all been in different levels of isolation. And I think this could I think we need to be prepared to be supportive of of them. I am eager to have trying to read my own writing here. I'm also eager to hear some of the smaller, easy to change recommendations from the CDC added to our health and safety plan, such as eliminating masks that might have a vent or a valve in it. And you've already mentioned proper mask fitting. I think that is fantastic. And some of the fabrics are not really recommended. So, you know, we know that our kids are our young learners are not major transmitters of this, but we still should take those basic precautions. Moving past our, I'm calling it our reentry period. I'm really eager to hear about the remediation process for after school and summer. I'm eager to hear about mental health programs and resources. And I'm really eager to hear about the fall plan and specifically, are we going to have a remote option? I am really, really grateful that has already been done since our governor's announcement of the vaccination plan for education workers. This was another huge change. But it was a great change, and I thank you for all the work that you've done. And I'm really just looking forward to moving past this pandemic and getting our community back to normal. So thank you so much for all your all your work. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Winch. Moving on to Dr. Munson.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Barker, and thanks to Mrs. Campbell and the rest of the team that has put so much work into this and dealt with so many issues for a year now in a really, really very quickly changing situation. And I feel like we have a we need to have a completely different conversation almost every two weeks because the information's different, the situation is different and so forth. And I just want to sort of recognize and honor how difficult that is. And how I think that there are many outside observers that maybe don't recognize how difficult that is and how many problems there are that need to be solved. I I was really glad to, well, I mean, maybe what I should say is that, you know, what I what I hear in this presentation that 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 I think is is really good is the way in which our district reflects expert recommendations in terms of thinking about addressing the risk of 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 the pandemic through layers of mitigation, right? A recognition that there there really is no one solution that works a hundred percent. None of them work on their own. And that what we need to do is have multiple layers of mitigation. You know, that have to do with watching how much incidence rates are in the community, watching how far apart we are, watching whether we cover our faces, watching how we're moving our air and ventilation and so forth. So I really appreciate that that is the approach that the district is taking. Also appreciate the sort of recognition that, you know, most of us here are not experts in this. And so it it is the it the adult thing to do is to is to admit that we're not experts in some of these things and get advice from experts on these issues. I actually have a series of questions, and I I'm afraid I've been writing them down both before the meeting and then while people were talking. And so they're not in any particular order of importance or even topic. But I did want, I did have a number of questions and things I don't totally understand. One is with the reduced social distancing, will that apply only to students? Or is the plan also to reduce the minimum social distance between students and staff and between different staff members?
Currently, the discussion was just the the total reduction of of social distancing would move from six feet to three to six feet. So that would include everyone. But of course, it would always be to the greatest extent possible. So that's, you know, something that just we we could consider and look at.
Okay, um, I mean, I don't have a, there's no preconceived viewpoint. I I mean, it's just a legitimate question. And one of the reasons I was confused is because I thought I understood that in the plan in the school, but then with the transportation presentation here, it was mentioned that the first seat is left open to keep distance from the bus driver, which I don't think would be necessary if we reduce the distance. Is that?
In skipping every other seat, it allows us to maintain that further distance. So you skip every other seat in different on different sides of the bus. So it's just a common practice that we would continue, but it wouldn't diminish the capacity of the bus in any way.
So every other seat allows forty four students to to a seat?
Yes. On a seventy seven passenger bus.
Right, okay. Okay, so, all right. So I I mean, I do think it's worth considering that. I know other places have looked at at changing it only because of the emerging science that the CDC and others are telling us that the sort of major the major drivers of infection in schools have turned out to be primarily adults. And the transmission from adults to children is actually much more likely than it is the reverse. So, okay. The the other question that I had had to do with contact tracing, I know the district has done its level best to do, I guess what I would call it is limited or partial contact tracing. That is contact tracing only insofar as there are school contacts. Presumably, with the reduction in the social distance, we are going to have many we're going to have many, many more people who fall under the current Pennsylvania Department of Health guidelines for contact tracing in schools. Who is who is doing that contact tracing in the district now? And how are they going to be able to juggle all of their existing responsibilities while also having having this added sort of contact tracing workload under the new the new plan?
Contact tracing currently is split between the administration, the nurses, the nursing staff, myself. So we will continue to, you know, operate and continue to do that contact tracing when it's necessary. And we don't know yet whether or not the Pennsylvania Department of Health is going to change that regulation. They're still you know, they're still looking at that regarding if they reduce that from six foot down. So there currently is no information regarding that, but the contact tracing will still continue. And it will still, the the workload will still be shared among the administration, the nursing staff, and myself.
So there's there's no there's no plan to hire temporary employees or or others to make sure we have as robust a contact tracing as we can, or or maybe another way to put it is you feel like, well, this is a this is a an unfair way to put it, but I'll put it unfairly sort of to to sort of make the point, which is there's enough slack time in people's current positions as administrators and so forth, that they can take up additional contact tracing loads.
And my my answer to that would be, I would believe that we would have to reevaluate it as it goes along to see if that changes in any significant way, but currently, I believe that we could handle that.
Okay, is it?
And I will, I just, I have a, I have another way to respond to that or additional information like I I just, I appreciate the question, and I will say that our our administrators, our school nurses absolutely have incredible responsibilities, like, you know, when we when we think about building leaders, like we talk about instructional leadership. And I think the reality during the pandemic is that many of us as leaders in education have had to sort of maybe shift our focus off of some things and dedicate it to things in terms of mitigation management or COVID management. And so, you know, I would never want there to be a perception that that our administrative team isn't incredibly busy with all of the the duties that they would have in a typical year. I mean, they've just, you know, as we've all done, have just sort of had to prioritize what's urgent and needs to be attended to in the moment. And and again, as Dr. Mirabella highlighted, like certainly, our nurses are in that same position and and Dr. Mirabella sort of oversees the process at the building level as well.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And actually, sort of my, I guess that's exactly my my perspective is one in which I worry a lot that people who are already overburdened with job responsibilities are being asked to take on additional responsibilities. But and and not to put too fine a point on it, but responsibilities that really have direct relationship to the health and safety of the whole community. And so, for example, it seems reasonable to me to use some of the S R funds to hire temporary staff to perform some of this work. If that would be, if that would be something that would allow this sort of other mitigation layer to be as robust as we can possibly make it in in the absence of a robust contact tracing by state officials and so forth. So I guess that that question that I guess leads into that that sort of recommendation. Another question, and I guess I need to preface it first with a question that because I don't quite understand how, I guess what I would call communal spaces in the in the district buildings right now are being used. My understanding is that often students are being placed in cafeterias and gyms and so forth at times when their classrooms are being disinfected or they're needed in some other way. Is that is that a fair? Is that a fair understanding, or do I misunderstand those how those spaces are currently being used?
That that is accurate.
Okay, so I guess my my question is when we reduce the the distance to to sort of three to six feet and we have, we essentially doesn't matter about the distance, we're going to have many, many more people in our our buildings, which means the amount of times that our schools are going to hit these numbers that require disinfecting and so forth is going to increase. I mean, just as a property of math. And so what is the plan for handling the the sort of greater need for these communal spaces outside of classrooms at the very same time that we're now calling on those spaces to be used for lunches and and so forth?
Right, so we would continue to use things like gym spaces, other classrooms, special area classrooms that aren't being utilized. We talked about the possibility of tents and things like that. So when we mentioned earlier in the presentation about using, you know, alternative spaces, we would continue to do that. I hear, and I understand what your your point is now you have, you know, double the amount of students. And so, you know, where do you go? So with the double amount of students, we use the similar spaces at three feet of social distancing when we have to relocate.
The other piece that I'll add again, and my my answer is going to be specific to elementary because we've talked about tonight, that's really where our our prior our focus is to begin. It is accurate that in some buildings, those common spaces such as cafeterias and or gyms might be set up as what we might describe as a temporary classroom. So if there is a student with symptoms who then leaves the classroom, we can relocate, do a disinfection and bring the students back to their home classroom after an appropriate period of time. So in the event that we need to use cafeterias or some of those other spaces for eating spaces, we recognize that across the elementary level, we have about twenty nine classrooms that are currently allocated to a remote teacher. And and so those remote teachers currently have a full size classroom, and they're connecting with their students all virtually. So we've talked about the fact that we might have to relocate our remote teachers to other places in the buildings where they might be able to continue to facilitate their remote instruction. It just might not be a full size classroom, which which then, as you can appreciate, frees up some of those temporary classroom spaces to shift kids to. So those So those are some of the logistics that we see having to um really fine tune and work out in each of our seven elementary buildings over the next two weeks.
Uh, great, that actually leads to my next question, which actually had to do with the relocation of. Uh, staff, so it's, there's currently twenty-nine teachers that are dedicated to fully remote for the elementary, is that, is that right?
That's correct.
And so that's of more or less twenty-nine classrooms?
Not all of the twenty-nine are in full-size classrooms, but but yeah, yeah, twenty-five.
Okay, so the the question is, to to the extent that they need to be relocated, let me take a step back. My question is motivated by sort of past discussions about space in our elementary uh buildings. I know that we're not swimming in space, um, and so I wonder. Like, where will these teachers be located to and and will they have the resources and the the sort of sound privacy and so forth? They need to continue offering the quality of remote education that they have been thus far?
Um, again, in in, we would be able to tell you the specifics once we actually map out um this, the logistics by each elementary building. But in having these preliminary conversations with principals. We have, we have identified some instructional, small group instructional spaces in buildings where they might be able to work. In some cases, it might be an office or a, an instructional space that's not a full-size classroom. To your point, Dr. Munson, like absolutely, these are, these are individuals who have a robust and and rigorous program that they are teaching. And so we would want to give them a space that is appropriate, like, like we certainly would not put them in a space that's not. Designed for individuals to be able to comfortably work out of and have their instructional resources there with them. Again, and and in the future, we'd be able to give you a better sense of how many of those individuals we've had, we'd have to work with to move. We've even talked about potentially thinking, um, like looking at instructional spaces across the district, not just in their current home building. You know, we have some space at district office, we have some space in maybe some of our other buildings, our secondary buildings that we could also. Really start to continue to think outside the box so that we have an appropriate instructional space for for all of our teachers to work from.
Great, thank you. Um, I guess I had some, some questions and then sort of wanted to offer some feedback on masks. The 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 first is on the slides that you had for today, um, you did talk about masks and mask exemptions. So how many mask exemptions do we currently have in the district?
We currently have fifty students with mask exemptions.
And are there any faculty or or staff that have mask exemption?
There are no faculty or staff that have mask exemptions.
And and then how many, um, how many of those students are in like specialized classrooms? For um, that that are not regular education classrooms?
There are forty-six special ed students out of the fifty that have mask exemptions and thirty-four of them are in self-contained classrooms.
Okay, so we're really talking about sixteen students that are, that are not in self-contained classrooms. That will not be wearing masks?
Yes.
Okay, um, I guess, so thank you for that, I I mean, my, um. My feedback is sort of echoes what Ms. Winch said, but I would actually put it more strongly. You know, going back to the sort of approach of the district to layers of mitigation. I actually feel pretty strongly that that we, we can really improve the health and safety plan by adding. Some more information about the sort of necessary and sufficient types of of masking. It seems to me in looking at the CDC recommendations, which we're relying on for one thing. We should also rely on them for other things, um, and they have very straightforward recommendations about masks. In terms of being multi-layered, in terms of uh fitting, um, in in terms of having a nose, whatever you call the nose thing. Uh, and 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 things like that, as we lower the level of mitigation for our social distancing. It it seems to me reasonable that we would um increase the level of of safety that we're offering with these other mitigation. Efforts, particularly when it is relatively inexpensive, uh, both in terms of, um. You know, what we're asking people to do, and and then also the the sort of financial costs. And, uh, you know, I I know in the presentation you talked about sort of some of the, there's an, there's an important educational piece here. And I agree with that a wholeheartedly, but also I think it's more than that. I mean, we're writing into the health and safety plan a minimum of three-foot distancing. We're not advocating just sort of an education campaign where we tell people, hey, you should stay apart. I guess I feel the same way about masks, um, you know, if there are expert recommendations about masks. That are doable, and I think that there are, uh, I think that we should include those um in the plan. That 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 we ultimately adopt on the twenty-second. Okay, so I had a question about the the slide about um. About IEP students and the and the ones that are already here five days. Uh, already in school five days a week. I noticed that the num, the proportion of middle school IEPs that are already in five days a week is substantially. Larger than at the elementary or the high school level. And I was curious if this was just a sort of random anomaly in the data, or if there was a systematic reason why. We have already almost a third of those students at the middle school level in school five days a week, but not in the other levels.
So there is a systematic answer to your question. And so one of our goals was to um bring back our low incidence populations five days a week from from the onset of this school year. And so we do have um at the middle level thirty-nine students who are either intellectually disabled. Have autism or have um a social emotional disturbance. And so there are classes at the middle level that um support those students. Specifically um at IR, there is one real specialized classroom. And so that is why there's such um a disparity in the numbers.
And are those, are those students that are served at IR, for example, are they all? In that, in in the middle school age category, or are those classrooms actually serving students who, if in a regular classroom, would be in elementary school or high school?
No, they're just middle-level classrooms, six through eight.
So it just, it just so happens that we have a much larger um cohorts of those students that are in middle school right now. Than we do at either of the other levels?
That, that's accurate, yes.
Okay, um, great, um, okay, so. I had a question about um the issue of, a couple of issues um with ventilation. I noticed when you talked in the slides about the buses that the windows would be open when weather permits. I think we talked a little bit about windows on the buildings uh last time, again, weather permitting. And I'm actually curious, um, I mean, I I know you can't say this exactly, but. I, in my own life, I have noticed that what people mean when they say weather permits varies a lot, right? I mean, there are some people who open their windows weather permitting, and that means when it's between sixty-nine and seventy-one degrees outside. And, you know, otherwise it's either too cold or too warm. And so I I'm just wondering, sort of, given how important ventilation is. How expansive does the district plan to be in providing this, this ventilation? You know, given the vagaries of the weather?
Well, from a building perspective, it relies more on the humidity levels. Again, not to bring in that humidity into the indoor environment where it starts uh forming on the walls and we start uh forming mold or mildew. What we would try to do is pressurize the buildings so that we're not bringing the air in through the windows. But we're actually pushing the air out of the windows and bringing fresh air in through the units.
Well, that's useful and would also, I mean, I, you know, when you say it, it sounds obvious, but I didn't have that in my mind sort of until you said it. And it might be useful to be sure that uh the staff in all of the buildings and so forth understand. That as well and the sort of purpose of of having the windows open. You had mentioned, um, Mr. Anushko, sort of a number of different uh mechanical means to sort of provide greater filtration and. And air exchange. Is this some, I mean, is it, is it the plan of the district to, for example, meet the the ventilation recommendations of three to four? Air exchanges per hour in those. Classrooms that are going to have three-foot social distancing, um, when we bring students back? Or are we not going to be able to provide that level of of um of protection on March twenty-ninth or April sixth?
I I think the goal would be to try to protect, uh, to get that protection at least to three air exchanges per an hour. However, it is one to be very difficult to prove in each classroom that that's what we're, that we're actually maintaining that. We don't have the equipment in each classroom to calibrate and say that we have three air exchanges an hour in every classroom. So I think it's gonna be kind of difficult to prove it, but that would be the goal. So I I I would almost have to look at the unit vents and see how many CFM were coming out of the unit vents and calculate each room by size, cubic feet and go from there.
So can you just clarify, so what I wrote down, I mean, in my notes, and I might have got it wrong, because you were speaking fast, but that. I had written down that the, that most, that our systems are designed for three exchanges per hour. And the the current pandemic recommendations are four to six?
That is correct.
Okay, and so are we going to be able to meet the four to six exchanges?
I I honestly cannot answer that at this time, quite frankly.
All right, I mean, I I understand that. The monitoring equipment might not be present, but sort of spitballing it, will we be there, or is it, is it, is that just not gonna be possible?
I but I believe that once we open the outside air dampers a hundred percent for most of the buildings, that we will be able to get a much higher air exchange than we currently have.
Okay, and how quickly, I mean, you talked about ionization equipment and um air purifiers. You know, if the district decided, again, using some of the um, the this, the federal subsidy money. To spend a half million dollars on air purifiers. How quickly could we get those? I mean, are those available at at in at? You know, in the quantity that we would be looking at?
Not in the quantity that we would be looking at, if if I was looking at, um, if if, I think we have roughly five hundred classrooms. And out of those five hundred classrooms, we have about three hundred that have univentilators in them and they're not served directly off an air handler. So to look at buying three hundred um air purifiers or air cleaners at one time, I don't think that quantity will be available. A lot of this equipment is actually manufactured in China. So I I can't verify for sure, but I I think we'd have a very difficult time purchasing it and having it here within two to three weeks.
Could, could we get it for all of our classrooms that either don't have windows or don't have windows that open?
I I could check with our multiple vendors to see what we can get and I can get back to you on that.
Okay, I mean, I I'm just trying to, I'm I'm trying to understand where we will be when we're actually putting kids in chairs, you know, three feet nose to nose. And I guess the 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 sort of story of the HVAC then makes me even more um. More focused on the mask issue, um, because we won't necessarily, i- it sounds like have the sort of full ventilation that would be ideal. Sort of under the circumstances, um, the, the other question, I had, I thought I had one more other, one more question. I guess not, I don't see it now. Thank you for indulging all these questions, I appreciate it and I appreciate all the work that's been, that's been put into this.
Thank you, Dr. Munson, uh, Mr. Jankowski.
Thank you, Dr. Barker, um, I first like to thank the administration for for all of your hard work and continuing efforts. You know, to try to find a a feasible way for for our students to return full-time. So I thank you very much, um, you know, based on on the parameters laid out. In in the presentation, I I'd very much be in favor of a return for the the K through five. However, you know, to the extent we we remain in, in substantial spread. Uh, I I I do think it would be important to 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 the extent it's feasible and economical to to bring back at least a K through two. Uh, from a six-feet distance, um, you know, the, just. The impact of having a a full five-day in-person education for for the the younger kids, I think, is is extremely important. Couple of questions I have, in in the one slide that it stated the um. The different numbers of teachers, uh, staff, et cetera, that would be needed for the various scenarios. And 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 one of the the last columns said number of vaccines needed, and I believe for, for a return for K through five, it said. Somewhere around five hundred and eighty-three, but but we have, but there's an allotment of four hundred right now. It, is there a correlation between vaccination of our teachers and staff and and the return? Or or is it, you know, to the extent we can get vaccinated, that that's great, but that that's not a determining factor for returning the students. Back to school full-time?
Um, and I will, I will answer the question, but I also want to first just clarify what's on the slide. Because you bring up a really great point in terms of, yes, the slide indicated that the the maximum number of vaccines needed, for example, at a particular level. Being about five hundred. That information was just our pure, based on our calculation of the total number of. Each labor group that is working at the elementary level. So then what we were able to do is, once we had the survey back from all of our staff members. We were able to actually identify exact, well, and this was because it was a question on the survey. Exactly which individuals either indicated that they had already been vaccinated. And or wanted to be considered, wanted the Johnson and Johnson vaccine. Um, and so just to to emphasize again. Any individual who responded that they wanted to be included in the Johnson and Johnson vaccine. And is associated with the elementary program, we were able to schedule those individuals for the first round. And so. Now to respond to your question, from from the district's perspective, it really is about the fact that. The vaccine opportunity has been made available to staff and in particular. Any elementary staff member who indicated that they are interested in that vaccine, we were able to schedule them for that initial round, which will be scheduled this week through the IU.
Okay, great, that's helpful, thank you. And and and, you know, your estimations, um, and, you know, obviously I'm speaking from the elementary level, because that's where we had the most information uh today. You're talking about, there there there, there may be some need for some relocation, but but overall. The students would remain with their teachers and so forth, was that based on the survey results?
So I looked at it, yeah, that was based on a combination of the survey results and current um hybrid teachers and the amount of students that are currently in a hybrid model. And uh, and so combining both and kind of looking worst-case scenario to determine what the needs are in the classroom capacities and what they would be.
So what would the average classroom size be uh under the scenario based on the results of the survey?
Twenty, twenty-one is the average, um, and so twenty-one, K through five, the average classroom size is about twenty-one.
Oh, no, can't, sorry.
No, that's okay, um, so I was just gonna say, of course, you know, there's some classrooms there that are getting close to, you know, the top. And so that's where we'd have to really look very closely, um, and as Mrs. Campbell talked about, that next commitment survey would be really critical. Once we lay out the plan exactly, um, and get the commitment from from staff or from families, because we know that some family said, well. If this is gonna happen, then I'd say yes, if this is not, and so we heard that feedback. And so getting that, then we'll be able to make final decisions, but those that are up at the upper tier, um, getting high, we we would possibly look at relocation or figuring out an alternative plan.
Okay, that was my next question, because, you know, with with the, with the, with the, the trend and 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 cases decreasing and. You know, who, if it continues on it, on on this trend. Uh, and and based on the information and protocols discussed today, to the extent this information becomes more widespread amongst our community. I would imagine a scenario where more, more families will want to. Go to full-time, uh, particularly, you know, kids. And friends and neighborhoods hearing that their friends are going full-time, they're, and if they're hybrid now, or I mean, if they're remote, they might want to go full-time. Are we, are, you will be prepared for that scenario and the accommodations needed and perhaps additional staff that may be needed. Such that, you know, doing the 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 next survey isn't going to postpone. The commencement of full-time, um, because the numbers might change.
Right, so based on everything that we have right now, we can, we can make, we can make it happen. So if there's a drastic change, I think we still will be able to to make it happen, um, based on what we know and if it's at the three feet of social distancing.
Okay.
The other people that I'll point out, Mr. Jankowski and. The other people that I'll point out, Mr. Jankowski, and and again, you know, obviously, this is not an absolute, but the one piece that I will say is that. Elementary percent of families that have chosen the remote option. Has really remained consistent for us throughout the school year. And so. Do we do we expect that we might see a slight adjustment? Absolutely. Um, and hopefully the data won't prove me wrong when we come back, but. You know, the feedback that we've heard from our elementary families because we um. We have a a teacher who's allo- who's who's devoted to the synchronous remote instruction. Um, and again, just an opportunity to recognize the the fantastic work of our our elementary remote teachers, like our our families. Have had really positive feedback about that program. And so whether it was health reasons that they made those decisions. And or consistency reasons, um, and or other situations, you know, the families overall have been happy with that model. And and the thought of maybe changing their child's teacher for the remainder of the school year, while there's some of those social pressures from peers that you talked about in terms of my friends are all going back, I want to too. We, you know, we are tending to see the remote families maybe stick with that model. Um, again, hopefully I'm not eating crow in two weeks, but but that number hasn't changed too much.
I think that's a testament to the remote uh education program too. Um, with respect to busing. You know, going back to pre-pandemic. You know, life, um, and and, you know, I'm taking the example of my 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 own. Children's bus. It was it was a pretty crowded bus. I mean, it was like three, three kids a seat, every seat. It it seems to me that, you know, if you have two a seat, every other seat. Doesn't seem realistic based on the numbers, but I mean, is that? A hard and fast rule or 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 would we we willing to go to a seat, every seat? Or I mean, are we are we prepared to accommodate to the extent, of course. Kids wanted, you know, i- if you're already being have have a parent or or some other guardian. Transporting you to the school, you you might like that and that 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 might be unlikely to change, but. But are we prepared for the scenario where there could be an increase in in students uh taking the bus?
We did, we did prepare and we did game out how many students currently, how many families have responded back. And that they would be utilizing the bus transportation. That did create more than forty-four students on some of the seventy-seven passenger buses. And some of those students that overflow, if you want to call it. Would be able to be addressed by current bus runs that would not have those forty-four students on it. And I wanted to be, I might have not explained that correctly, but. It's the way the bus, the way the bus is set up is it it doesn't actually come out to be every other seat. Okay, so um, it's 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 staggered. And uh, what do you call it? To the best possibility, including putting two, two students in the same seat from the same family.
Gotcha. Thank you. And then my last question, you know, just thinking of 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 the teachers and and, you know, the increased burden of having more students. You know, right now, a lot of the class sizes in elementary. Could be anywhere from five to ten students in the class, and if you're gonna double that. Just monitoring the students and and kids being kids and their masks and, you know, that it it increases, you know. The burden on teachers to make sure students are wearing their masks appropriately or you're at recess and you have a pack of students. You know, start playing freeze tag or something because there's so many kids now, more kids that you have to monitor. You know, again, how are we going to to, you know, provide assistance for the teachers and supervise this?
Yeah, I I mean, I'll just respond. Uh, you know, I think uh our our teachers do a a great job and you're right, it's it's double the the kids and so, you know, this is something where we talked about phasing in so that, you know, we could kind of start to prepare. Um, not just um to bring kids back to what, you know, close to normal looks like, but um, but also to kind of to to phase in. Um, you know, um, having full uh all students in your classroom. And so. You know, we would we'd look to those professionals, our teachers, to to do the best, um, you know, making sure they're doing the best to supervise the students and making sure that. You know, we're monitoring the masks and, you know, doing all that. And so. You know, we'll work with them and and see, you know, uh, making sure that that they are supported and whatever it is that's needed. Um, and we'll see if there's extra staff or, you know, if if we have to look to our building leaders to to um staff differently, that's something that we could kind of monitor as we as we as we go through it.
And our nurses would also be helping with presentations and reminders to the students um about proper mask wearing as well.
Okay, great. That's all I have. So tha- thanks again, um, for for your efforts in this regard.
Thank you, Mr. Jankowski, Ms. Bowman.
Yes, um, thank you. I'm really happy that we're moving in this direction. Um, just a couple of questions and a short comment from me. Um, it sounds like uh that we don't quite have lunch figured out, um, yet. Or it it can you confirm that that's true? And if so, um, will you have more specifics about what lunch will be? By the next meeting before we vote on this?
Yes, I believe we we clarified that again, at lunch, we recognize that we need to continue to provide six feet social distancing. So obviously, at the elementary level. Um, the current model is that our elementary students eat in their classroom, and we can do that because we have six feet of social distance. And so. Um, as Mr. Anushko described, there are multiple options then that we can look at in terms of. Can can half of the students remain in the classroom at six feet social distance for their lunch and the other half have a different location where they eat? Um, we're literally in the process of working through how many. Students can we safely fit on one of the cafeteria benches socially distanced, looking at? Um, I will say we we are looking at creative solutions such as the Plexiglas barriers, and while I certainly appreciate the parent feedback in terms of. You know, it's different from maybe what our kids are used to. Um, but at the same time, it does allow us to safely feed students. Um, in in spaces that maybe weren't originally designed for six feet social distancing, you know, if you could envision sort of the cafeteria tables with the benches across from each other. Um, so we will look at all those scenarios and then certainly have that level of detail at our at our next meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Um, I hate to uh ask so many specifics that drill down into that, but. From what I understand, when we have had, not we, but when schools have had outbreaks, they've tended to happen at lunch, so. Um, it's probably the biggest risk area for us to uh overcome as we implement this model. Um, one of uh my other colleagues started to ask this question and I and I think it got a partial answer and I'm just, uh, I I think maybe the answer is I don't know, but. Um, just want to make sure that that's correct. Um, when we move the students closer, uh, three to six feet. Um, the definition of close contact then in, I believe, increases. Um, so. When you have uh an infected person in the classroom closer than six feet, does that mean the whole classroom has to quarantine at that point?
It would only be the individuals that do not meet that criteria. However, I I have to stress that the Department of Health. Has not changed six foot, but they are re-examining the six regarding close contact tracing. But currently it is six feet, so there would be a larger number of of individuals that would be looked at as far as potential close contacts. But the whole classroom wouldn't be within six feet of.
Okay.
One student.
Okay, that makes sense. So e- everybody that's sitting around that person within six feet.
Absolutely.
Uh, unless it changes, which I understand, um, that's an unknown for us. Um, and then I have a question about the secondary level. I understand we'll get some information about that at the next meeting. Um, I am a little, I'm confused about what is being offered to the special ed and English as a section language students. Um, or I'm, I think I'm being, I'm confused about the designation of those students. Um. Are is five day a week only being offered to a certain subset of the IEP students or offered to all of them?
So the five day a week at this point is not being offered to all special education students. And so I think I articulated at the last board meeting. That um, we actually looked at our low incidence populations first, and we made sure that those students um. That could not receive an education at home, um, were in five days a week. And as we progress through the school year, we um, we're getting requests for five days a week, and so we looked at each case individually. We actually. Um, used a rubric to look at the students' academic functional performance and social emotional behaviors. Um, and so we are continuing to do that. However, with that said. I um, did look at the survey results for the special educa- special education population at the secondary level. And so I will be working with secondary leaders um to determine if we can bring special education students back into buildings.
Okay, wonderful. Um, and I. I think that 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 ends my question, so I'll just uh move into a a short comment. Um, I've been um. You know, talking to pretty much anyone who will answer the question of how you're doing and. Um, been uh just stunned by how many uh parents and children who are struggling. Um, way more than I was expecting and way more severe than I was expecting. Um, not just struggling with the things that we would expect, like grades, uh, school refusal, things like that, but um. With emotional outlook, um, many, many parents telling me about suicidal children. Um. Uh, and of course. I understand that just the people I talk to may not actually be a scientific study, but um, given that. In my other previous years as a board member, no one had told me about their suicidal children. I I can only um assume that we're at the a point where we have one epidemic. That is crossing over with a pandemic. And because of that. Um, if it helps our students to go back five days a week. I'm completely in favor of it, especially for our high need students, um, our youngest learners, our students who are who have demonstrated that um. Virtual learning is not working for them, um, as well as our students who are having um emotional psychological distress. Um. And I'm hoping that we can return as many of them at the secondary level as we can as soon as possible, obviously within reason. I'm uh, because of the extent of the distress that I'm hearing from different families, I'm actually. In favor of returning um on the date specified, even if we are still in substantial spread. Um, and. Hoping that we can con- continue whatever model we're in so that the students have some consistency. Um. With all of the mitigation factors in place. So if we move down to three feet or three to six feet, I hope we just stay there and keep it consistent so that um. Students can continue to go and count on school every day and not uh be in a situation where they're worried about. Am I gonna have school tomorrow or not? Obviously, um, we have to. Uh. Do what the state and the federal government tell us to do, so I'm not saying that we should ignore any of that. Um. And I also just want to thank the administration for working so hard and bringing this about and also the members of our health and safety task force. Um. You know, it's really easy to try to read as much as. I can on the internet and feel like I'm an expert, but that would just be hubris. So um. It's it's um helpful to be able to lean into the experts and we've been blessed to have experts from LBHN and even. Um, an epidemic epidemiologist who happens to be a parent in our district who can guide our district in the right direction. So I am in favor of this of opening five days a week for um. A safe opening and look forward to the next meeting when we can vote in in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Uh, moving on to uh Mr. Champagne.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to thank uh Mrs. Campbell and the administration for putting forth this uh. Option to return the the K through five students to in-person learning. I have a few questions. Just on the IEP and the ESL students, I just want to make sure I understood what was just said. So. Those students who are in the K to five um cohort. All the IEP and the ESL students that would like to come back will come or will be eligible to come back. Is that correct?
That is accurate.
Okay, and then only the the students that we have identified at the secondary level currently. Um, are gonna be in the five day program. They're not, you're not bringing those students back at this, under this proposal.
Well, we're looking at it, so I can tell you that um. At the middle level, we have a hundred and thirty-six students that are attending five days a week. We had a hundred and ninety-five students answer or parents respond to the survey stating that they would like their child to come in five days a week.
And would we have the staff that would be eligible for the vaccine to support those additional students at the secondary level?
So right now, I I don't believe um the first phase of the vaccinations would cover the secondary staff, but I don't want to misspeak. Um, I was not really involved in planning the vaccinations for staff.
Okay.
I don't know if anyone else can add clarity to that.
The first round of vaccinations, we included those special ed teachers who have five day a week students exclusively, and so those would be. Um, the the low incidence disability classroom teachers. Not necessarily all special ed teachers at the middle level have been included in the initial round.
Okay, and when do we do we have any additional information on when additional rounds of the vaccine will be forthcoming in terms of? Uh, you know, the uh the rollout of the Johnson and Johnson vaccine or just the other vaccines that are available uh to to students, uh, to teachers?
They believe that the possibility of the next round could be at the end of March or the beginning of April, but there's no guarantee on that.
Okay, so it would be, it would not be every week that we're talking about. It would be a, there is a slight lag in in this first round to the next round, it 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 sounds like.
That's accurate.
Okay, and then with respect to the ventilation system, um. So the, if I heard the response to Dr. Munson's question correctly, you know, we're currently. Or the system is designed for roughly three turnovers a a an hour. Is that accurate?
Yes, air exchanges of three, yes.
Okay, and that and that's running with air conditioning and all all systems up and functioning?
Correct.
And even if we open the dampers, it doesn't affect the air conditioning quality or any of the, if, you know, temperatures do get warm during the spring?
Uh, no, even if we open the dampers, we'll still, it it may not be as energy efficient because we'll be running the hot water coil or the chill water coil more frequently. But it we can still do it.
Okay, and then with respect to monitoring the the classrooms, you were saying that you don't have the existing equipment to do that. Is that a? What to do that was, is that a huge expense? Uh, or is this something that can be calculated very relatively easily and and not, you know, having to be monitored on a on an hourly basis or?
Um, the, uh, we could actually buy the uh a piece of equipment to actually monitor the CFM coming off the grills. Uh, it'd be a hood that you put on the exhaust grills where, and then you can add the CFM coming off of those, look at the room size and calculate it ourselves. Or we could hire an outside person to come in and do an air balancing study on it and see what their results are.
And is that something you're considering or is that something that is really not? You know, if we go on beyond uh this period of time and we have to. Look at four to six air exchanges an hour, it seems to me that, you know, if you're in the fall, for example, we may need to do this. Uh, is that something you would be considering or or what what is your thought on that?
Um, actually, my thought would be that we would purchase the piece of equipment and we would work some additional hours to go from room to room. And calculate um what we currently, where we currently stand and then evaluate the system from there with our feasibility study as we do that later in the fall.
Okay, so I would assume the ESR funds would probably potentially be a a option for looking at any of that equipment. Uh, is that a fair assessment?
Um, I'll I would let Mr. Saul answer that question.
I mean, I read that HVAC related equipment is 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 eligible for ESR funds uh in terms of of. So I would, I would assume that, you know, any monitoring equipment to 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 look at that would would also qualify.
I would agree with that statement. The one thing, um, Mr. Champagne, if I can.
The one thing, Mr. Champagne, if I can, just if I could, since I had a minute to speak here, one thing we need to remember with, in terms of spending the funds and it's come up about different pieces of equipment, et cetera, and how quickly we could do that. There are strict procurement rules for using federal funds. So I just wanted to mention that when we're talking about trying to get equipment and having it quickly, there's, there's a bid process and things that need to be observed. So I just wanted everybody to be mindful of that in terms of using those funds. Obviously for the things we're referencing and you're talking about fall, it's a little bit different. We'd have time for that, but anything that we were going to try to have in the next two weeks or three weeks, if it has significant costs, it's likely prohibitive because of the bidding rules.
Thank you. I'd like to say that I, I'm very supportive of this plan to get the K to five students obviously back as soon as possible. I would also look to support, even if we are in the substantial level of spread, depending on some feedback we hear from the Health and Safety Committee, to bring those students back as well. I think it's, you know, it's something we need to do as, as we are fast approaching, you know, over a year and, and not having students full time. So I appreciate all the efforts that's gone into this and I look forward to hearing from the, the administration and the Health and Safety Committee at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Champagne. Dr. Levinson?
Thank you, Dr. Bacher. I'd like to begin, like many of my colleagues have already to, you know, express my appreciation for all the work that, you know, the administration or, or Health and Safety, Health and Safety Task Force and all those associated with, with, with putting this together and coming up with the details. So I'm very grateful for that. I think that there are a number of, of comments and questions asked by my colleagues that, that were also of interest to me. So I'm, I'm glad that we were able to discuss that as well. I am, I'm certainly excited about the prospect to, you know, have our students return to five days, certainly, you know, prioritizing the elementary students, eventually getting the secondary students involved. And again, you know, I, I can certainly see how, you know, the conditions and information that's changed in the, in the last couple, couple of weeks, you know, has, has certainly created a more favorable situation for us to, you know, make these adjustments. So, you know, with that, you know, I, I, I support the changes being recommended for the Health and Safety Plan and the other recommendations that the administration has set forth for helping us to return to five day for, for our students, again prioritizing K through five. And, you know, so, you know, I, I know I've said this in another, another statements, but you know, I really think that the community, you know, continues need, needs to, or needs to continue to help, help us, you know, move, move forward on this path to, you know, creating conditions that are conducive to, to bringing all our students back. So, so with that, you know, I, I do intend to, to support, you know, the, the motion to, to modify, you know, and I think there, there have been some good suggestions to even tweak what, what's already being proposed. So, you know, forgive me if these are some, some basic questions, but, but, you know, I, I do want to just clarify for myself. You know, how, how are we defining, you know, what, 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 you know, conditions we have, you know? Certainly, you know, within the presentation, we saw that, you know, based on the, the transmission rate and, and the testing, it technically keeps the high county in the substantial spread phase. But, you know, I, I have seen, for instance, on the P V E site, you know, a, a way that they're defining what, what's considered substantial, what's considered moderate. So I was, I was wondering if, if you could clarify for me, you know, how is the district defining whether or not we're in the moderate or the substantial spread status?
Sure, I can define that for you. So we are currently using the model that is put together by P V E, the Department of Health and the CDC. And so in the moderate level of spread, the, the incident rate per 100,000 residents in the last seven days would need to be between 10 and under 100. And you'd also have to have a PCR rate between 5% and less than 10%. Having both of those would put in the moderate level in Lehigh County. So that's what's currently being utilized. And so you have to have both of those factors to, that would fit into that lever.
Right. So, so both need to be in, in effect. So, so essentially, you know, the, the, the plan that we have here and, and the dates that have been provided for, for, you know, returning our youngest learners in, into the classroom are in essence anticipating as, as presently proposed and anticipating that we're going to be in moderate spread by, by the end of this month. Is that accurate?
That's accurate, yes.
Okay. So, so with that, again, you know, I, I do like, I do like what I see in terms of where trend lines are and, and, you know, I, you know, I do hope that we can continue to reduce and bring that, that incidence rate, you know, into the moderate category. Again, now that we've, we've kind of put, put a date on this, you know, I, I think it's important to, to try to move us to a situation where it can actually execute with, with those dates. Cause, cause again, you know, I'm sure a lot of people are looking forward to being able to do that. So, so in that regard, you know, both Ms. Bowman and Mr. Champagne, you know, you mentioned this, that, you know, I, I do think that there, that there needs to be some, since we're so close in terms of where, where the designation is to being in moderate, it needs to be some, some effort put into, you know, considering the fact that, that, you know, five day is a priority, certainly for our youngest learners. And, you know, we, we should seek, seek the, the feedback from, from, from our team and, and, and understand whether this is still something that we can stick to and, and allow the, the community to, to, you know, you know, have this accommodation that we're making. So, so again, you know, I'm grateful for all the work that's put into this and I look forward to looking at this and and voting in favor of the changes in, in two weeks and then understanding where exactly we can be, you know, at the end of March, beginning of April. Thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Levinson. Mr. Bird?
First of all, I would thank the administration for the presentation and I, I guess I just have some comments and I'd also have some kudos for the administration. Over the last few months, the administration has done a great job in executing the Health and Safety Task Force Plan. They've accomplished their mission, I believe. Through mitigation, they reduced the risk of COVID-19 for all the students, staff in our district. I think moving forward, they will continue on that same execution with any change we make in the Health and Safety Plan. Therefore, I support that we try to move to a five day plan, even though we're substantial, to get our youngest kids back in school and students. I think it is the best thing and the best thing for the district at this point. After that, I have one question. We still will have remote students. Do we have any plan to look at improving our technology for our remote classrooms in elementary level? I know that some funds are going to be available and that part of that.
Mr. Bird, can you repeat the last part of your question? You cut out after you mentioned technology, improving technology in the classrooms?
Did you get that? I kind of broke up. Is there any plan, look at improving the remote technology in our classrooms as we move our younger students back? There may be some challenges for the teachers to teach both remote and also.
I think you cut off again. I think you're asking about teaching remote and in-person classes? If I can read in?
I can speak to that a little bit. I think some of the strain that we've seen with our devices lately in the network has a lot to do with timing. Some of it has to do with Bluetooth technology. We found that our teachers that have started to wire in directly to our projectors have been actually having a lot more success. Our expectation as a department is once our students come back to school full time, there's going to be less strain on things like our Apple TVs and those types of things. So I think there will actually be more improvement and we'll see things go back to how they were pre-pandemic. I think many of you who were here, actually before I was here, would know about the infrastructure plan that we had undergone. We're at 10 gigabytes right now. I think I reported to you last time that we're currently only using about 10 to 15% of our throughput in our network. So that's not actually really the issue. It's a lot of the, there are several very intricate processes that come together that could kick someone off their Wi-Fi or their network or Zoom or anything else. But having those children back in school will actually take the load off of our network and some of the other technology that we're using. So I wouldn't say that upgrades are, are really necessarily needed. I think it's just having the kids back in school is going to actually help the teachers significantly, significantly so they don't have to rely as heavily on technology all of the time.
Thank you. That's all I have. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. I have a couple of comments. I guess random comments and then some questions also. Just, just want to bear, have people bear in mind, I think people are thinking, oh, we're going from six feet to three feet allows us to double the number of people in the classroom, but it's actually an area thing. So it potentially could as much as quadruple the number of students in the classroom. So if we're at six foot limit now, we're not necessarily going to be squeezed down to three feet when we have twice the number of kids in the classroom. It's possibility we'll have more. I think the idea of having the three feet in there is to say that we won't go below three feet in, in our classrooms, regardless of how there's situated. I did have a question about the contact tracing based on some of Dr. Munson's questions. And I'm just curious, I don't recall what's in our Health and Safety Plan, whether we have specifically the six foot, within six feet guidance, because that's what was in place in the time? Or do we reference the Pennsylvania guidelines? And I guess why I'm asking it is if, I don't need an answer here, but if, if the Pennsylvania state, we're going to change their guidelines, would we have to change our Health and Safety Plan to adopt the new guidelines or do we already reference their guidelines rather than have specifics in our Health and Safety Plan? And I'm just asking if you know the answer to that, I'll take the answer now, but if not, just something to look at when we're updating Health and Safety Plans if we want to take advantage of new guidelines.
We could, we could take a look at that to confirm, but I do believe currently in the Health and Safety Plan, it references that we do follow the Department of Health's recommendation, which is six feet.
Okay.
Seeing it kind of as a combination that's outlined in there.
So if we want to take advantage of that, make sure that the language lets us take advantage of that. On the discussion of contact tracing also, I have noticed many fewer announcements coming through than in the December, January timeframe. So I think that in alone helps us with the contact tracing and is an indication of what we're seeing that the, the, the incidence rate is coming down in the county. A number of people have talked about the, the quarantining requirements. I believe that if adults are quarant, are vaccinated, they no longer have to quarantine on the Health and Safety Plan, under the, the contact tracing guidelines. Is that correct?
I could speak to that. I can tell you that a fully vaccinated person, no matter which vaccine they have, on day 15 up to day 90, if they have an exposure, either household exposure or out of the household exposure to a positive person, they do not have to quarantine, but they have to be fully vaccinated for two weeks prior to not having to quarantine. And right now, the maximum set by the CDC is up to 90 days.
And that's probably governed by the, the lack of data we have and that might change in the future as we get more data.
Absolutely. There is a possibility that that could change as more data becomes available.
Okay. And then the last thing, I would also like to commend the administration on their plans. I'm in agreement with the K through five plan that was presented. I would also, as some of the other board members would say, I think considering the mitigation factors that children under 12, 12 through 14, I think it was mentioned, are less likely to transmit the disease. And the indication that all of our adults in the elementary schools will be vaccinated by the end of the, by the end of the month, I would be in favor of extending the K through five traditional education plan, full-time plan to, even if we're still in substantial. So I think four or five, I'm sorry, three or four other board members indicated similar comments tonight. So I would ask fellow board members, if you have a strong objection to that, to let the administration know or, or supportive of that, either in additional comments tonight or, or directly through email. Cause I think that is an important thing to consider, both for the Health and Safety Team to commit, consider that cha, change and for the administration, consider that in their, their planning. And seeing no further comments from the board or questions, we can move on. Thank you, everyone. The next item is personnel. I'll entertain a motion for items one through eight in the Personnel Agenda Item.
Naomi Winch, so moved.
Second, Bowman.
Are there any comments from, or questions? Mrs. Allen, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Champagne?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkowski?
Aye.
Dr. Levinson?
Aye.
Dr. Munson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Winch?
Aye.
Ms. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Bird?
Aye.
Dr. Barker?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Dr. Barker, if I can make a, an introduction, as you know, we, this is something that we typically do and we miss, you know, there are many things that we miss about our in-person meetings, but I appreciate the board's support on the personnel, including the hiring of our Human Resources Director. And so I know that Mr. Hinkle is joining us tonight on our Zoom call and wanted to just officially welcome him to continue as part of our leadership team in the district. I believe he is a well-known and friendly face to many of, many of the board members and certainly to many, many in our community. Drew has, has quite an interesting path. He started off actually with a career in sports journalism for NBC Sports. And then really decided that, that he had maybe missed his calling and, and went back to school for education. And so he has about 10 years of experience as an elementary teacher. Most of those years here in the district at both Westco'sville Elementary as well as Shoemaker Elementary. And then for the past five years, he's been the building principal at Jefferson Elementary. And so he has proven himself really over the course of his career to just be an outstanding leader. And we certainly look forward to him expanding his leadership role by joining our central administration team as the Director of Human Resources. And we've talked about the, the, you know, we've talked about the fact of taking on a Director of Human Resources role during a pandemic is certainly maybe the challenge of his career. And so we are all here to support him and know that he will just do fantastic things in his new position. So welcome, Drew.
I'd also like to extend my congratulations and I'm glad you turned your video on so we can put a face to the name. Congratulations on your, your new appointment.
Thank you so much.
Okay, moving on to the next personnel item, I'll entertain a motion to approve the new agreement with our Food Care Actors Association.
Champagne, so moved.
Levinson, second.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Allen, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Jenkowski?
Aye.
Dr. Levinson? Dr. Levinson?
Aye.
Dr. Munson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Winch?
Aye.
Ms. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Bird?
Aye.
Mr. Champagne?
Aye.
Dr. Barker?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Motion passes. Uh, moving on to business operations. Uh, Item D is for information only, so I'll, if there are no objections, I'll attain a entertain a motion for Items A through C together.
Jenkowski, so moved.
Munson, second.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Allen, will you call the roll?
Sorry.
Dr. Levin.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Dr. Levinson, sorry, I didn't see your hand up.
That's fine. Um, just just two quick questions. Under Item B, for contracts agreements with the uh agreement we have with Gorman and Associates, um, looking at the contract, it it broke out a a something called a single audit fee. Is that something that we're pretty much going to have to do?
Yes, um, the single audit, uh, i- is this audit specifically for federal um revenues, federal programs? And, uh, if you receive more than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funding, you have, you you're required to do a single audit. So that is required.
Okay, so we're definitely getting more than that. Okay, thank you. And then the uh the second question for the exterior masonry restoration, I'm always interested in understanding how this bid cost compared to what was budgeted. Um, would would, uh, maybe Mr. Inushko be able to comment on that?
Yeah, and, um, with this project, the costs were actually twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars higher than anticipated. The original budget was a hundred and ten thousand.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any additional questions? I'll pause. Okay, uh, Mrs. Allen, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Levinson?
Aye.
Dr. Munson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Winch?
Aye.
Ms. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Bird?
Aye.
Mr. Champagne?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkowski?
Aye.
Dr. Barker?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Movements pass. Uh, moving on to curriculum, um, since the uh calendar has been on uh the agenda for the last couple of meetings for uh discussion, I'll entertain a motion to take uh both Item A and B uh together.
So move Bowman.
Levinson, second.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Allen, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Munson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Winch?
Aye.
Ms. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Bird?
Aye.
Mr. Champagne?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkowski?
Aye.
Dr. Levinson?
Aye.
Dr. Barker?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Movements pass. Uh, moving on to, uh, LCTI. Do we have a, um, uh, an update?
Yes, uh, thank you, Dr. Barker. Uh, the LCTI Joint Operating Committee met back in February, um, late uh February twenty-fourth. Highlights of the meeting, as of that meeting, um, Kadosaku, East Penn, Northern Lehigh, Northwest Lehigh, Salisbury and Southern Lehigh had all approved the budget for the coming year for both the general academic, uh, General Fund and the Academic Center. I'm assuming that that vote was fifty-four to, uh, yes, zero, no, zero abstentions. I assume the other districts will have approved the budget, uh, in the coming meeting this month. Uh, Camp LCTI is being debated as to whether or not, uh, the LCTI will offer Camp LCTI this summer. Uh, I'm hoping they will, but it's not, uh, sure how that will be handled, given you might still have, uh, some limitations on social distancing and so forth. Uh, they're also working on messaging throughout the Lehigh County and for the fiftieth anniversary uh for the uh Institute, and we'll hear more about that in the coming meetings. And finally, Sean Will, who is currently a member of the, uh, LCTI team, has been appointed Director of Academic and Special Programs. He is the replacement for Grace Loffler, who passed away suddenly in in, uh, late January, and that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Champagne. Are there any questions or comments on the report? Uh, then moving on to the nomination for, um, uh, vacancy at the, on the LTRIC uh Board for a trustee-at-large position, we have one, uh, potential candidate, uh, Daniel Boskett. So I will entertain a motion to nominate Daniel Boskett um, as the East Penn nominee for this position.
So move Bowman.
Second Champagne.
Uh, Mr. Bird, you have comment?
Comment. I've met Dan Bosick and, uh, had a lot of discussions about education. Dan is very concerned of every community to education, uh, in the community in the Lehigh Valley. So I support Dan and I wish the board, because so, boy, he was a great candidate.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Then, Ms. Allen, Mrs. Allen, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Winch?
Aye.
Ms. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Bird?
Aye.
Mr. Champagne?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkowski?
Aye.
Dr. Levinson?
Aye.
Dr. Munson?
Aye.
Dr. Barker?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Motion passes. Uh, moving on to announcements, uh, we had an executive session, uh, today at six thirty before this meeting where we discussed negotiations, personnel and safety. The next, uh, our next board meeting will be Monday, March twenty-second at seven thirty. And I will now entertain, oh, um, Mr. Bird, do you have a comment or is that still from before? I'll now entertain a motion for, uh, to adjourn.
So move Bowman.
Second Bird.
Uh, Mrs. Allen, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Winch?
Aye.
Ms. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Bird?
Aye.
Mr. Champagne?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkowski?
Aye.
Dr. Levinson?
Aye.
Dr. Munson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Dr. Barker?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, everyone. Meeting is now adjourned.
Good evening, thank you.
Hi, and congratulations, Mr. Hinkle.